Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on municipal bulletin board.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Taglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Tealngedis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Before we do our flag salute, I want to take a moment of silence, please, for all the members or the people that were killed in Orlando and the people that were injured. They're in our prayers tonight. Thank you. We're going to start tonight. We have a couple of proclamations we want to make.
Flag salute.
No, I'm sorry, the flag salute. Everybody, please rise for the flag salute. And it is flag day, by the way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I please have the aunt of Dr. Austin Lane step forward, please? Since Mr. Lane could not be here this evening, his aunt is here to represent him. And we're going to read a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Hackensack. That reads, "Whereas Dr. Austin Lane was born and raised in Hackensack, New Jersey, and graduated from Hackensack High School in the late 1980s, which paved the way for many professional and educational achievements. And whereas Dr. Lane wished to further his education and attended Midland Junior College in West Texas on a basketball scholarship before going to Langston University in Oklahoma, where he earned a BA in psychology. And whereas Dr. Lane furthers his education even more by earning his MA in Human Relations from the University of Oklahoma, his PhD in Psychology from Walden University, and finally, a doctorate of Education in Higher Education Administration from the University of Alabama. And whereas Dr. Lane has held many leadership roles in the education community, most notably serving as second-in-command at Lone Star College, where Dr. Lane has successfully worked with students, boosted enrollment and fundraising, and lobbied the legislator for more money. Whereas Dr. Lane's long road of success began in the Hackensack school system, and now his hard work and dedication, along with his faith in God, has brought him to his most recent achievement, where he will be serving as the 12th president of Texas Southern University." Wonderful achievement. So therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, with all members of the city council, do hereby honor Dr. Austin Lane for his continued leadership and success in the education community. It's a wonderful achievement, and everybody should be proud of Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, everyone. I am so proud of my nephew. He's my only nephew, and he made our family very proud. He emailed me today and asked me to just read basically what he has done, but the mayor, thank you for covering it, because it was in the ear. But I'll just read a little bit. I don't want to take up much of your time. As many of you know, my name is Jeanette Lane, and I am the paternal aunt of Dr. Austin Lane. Our family is so proud of Austin and his many accomplishments, both as a young man and a devoted family man. We swell with pride every time we hear about a new milestone in his life. It is a testament to his perseverance and personal fortitude, and it is an honor that the city of Hackensack has issued a proclamation in his honor. As you say, Boston cannot be here today. He's getting ready for his big thing tomorrow night, and I wish I could go there in Texas. But so I had the privilege of taking this proclamation on his behalf. Dr. Lane wishes to thank the city of Hackensack for this tremendous honor. He is humbled and thankful to be recognized by his hometown, and wants to thank everyone for their support through the years. You know who you are, the Hunts, the Marshalls, the Williams. I'd be up here all night, because we're all family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Lane. And you are with Dr. Lane, because you're in his heart at his ceremony tomorrow night. So absolutely, he'll have you in his thoughts. Next proclamation, if I could please have Officer, Special Officer Scott Young come forward.
How are you, sir?
Good evening.
Again, a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Hackensack. Whereas Scott Young is a special sergeant for the city of Hackensack Police Department. And whereas Special Sergeant Scott Young, on March 19, 2016, was at the Pancake House in Maywood, New Jersey, when he observed a man choking and unable to breathe. Special Sergeant Scott Young immediately performed the Heimlich maneuver to clear the man's throat. And whereas Special Sergeant Young's quick thinking and life-saving efforts resulted in restoring the man's breathing and saving his life. Now, therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with members of the city council, do hereby honor and express our gratitude to Special Sergeant Scott Young for his community involvement and leadership, as well as congratulate Sergeant Young for his life-saving award from the Hackensack Police Department. Very good. Thank you.
I won't take up too much of your time. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Special Captain Battalion with the H-Cop Unit. Scott's commanding officer. I want to talk real quick about the incident that the mayor mentioned, so I won't go into that, but that's the reason why I'm here tonight. But there's also something else Scott did that nobody is yet aware of. In June 5 of 2015, during the second inning, taking his family to a baseball game, Boston Red Sox, up in Fenway Park, there was a bat incident where a baseball bat broke, and the baseball bat flew into the audience severely, and I mean severely, injuring a young woman there. Scott Young, without hesitation, identified himself as a Hackensack special police officer and rushed to the woman's aid. It took some time, but there was a doctor in the audience that helped him. The doctor stated to us that due to Scott's immediate action, he assisted in keeping this woman alive because of the heavy amount of breathing. Also, there's a special life-saving award, which states what Scott did in the Maywood Pancake House, like the mayor read to you. He'll be given that. And something very special tonight. Special Sergeant Scott Young is being decorated by the city of Hackensack Police with the Life Saving Medal.
One more thing. It's not a proclamation, but it is a presentation. May I please have Iris Kunin from Hipata forward? And from the Chiarko Center, part of the Bergen Community College Center, please come forward. I need Sandra Sroka and Deborah Carroll. Okay, what's happening here tonight, folks, is our local group, Hipata, which helps keep a lot of our young people off the streets and mostly away from drug and alcohol abuse, is here to present to the Bergen Community College Philip Chiarko Jr. Learning Center a plaque, and it says, "With grateful appreciation for their many years of support to the youth and community of Hackensack, New Jersey." Now, they do a tremendous job by helping Hipata, by helping keeping these kids away from drugs and alcohol, which benefits the city. It benefits all of us, but it benefits them most. And it's a wonderful job they do, and we really appreciate it, ladies. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular minutes for December 30 of 2013. Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilmember Taglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Tealngedis.
Abstain.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And now I need a motion to approve the council home meeting and the regular minutes of May 17, 2016. Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilmember Taglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Tealngedis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the manager's report.
Certainly, mayor, council, members of the public, city manager's report of June 14, 2016. First item is Carver Park Splash Park update. The contractor's progressing. We are targeting the fourth week of this month for the opening. We want to get the kids, when they get out of school, to have an opportunity, especially during the hot summer, to be able to cool off. As a sidebar to that, the soil that is currently being moved around and removed from the site is, by law, is required to be tested around the splash park, and it is certified to be cleaned by that testing procedure. There was some question about that, but the soil is cleaned and has been monitored. The third item has to do with an award that our labor council, Ray Wiss, received. It's the New Jersey State Governor's Jefferson Award in honor of Martin Luther King. It's for public service and volunteerism. I think that's a champion award, and just recognizing our attorney that handles labor issues for the city. Next item is the Hackensack Fire Department received a grant to purchase pass devices to be worn by all firefighters. What is a pass device? The device is used and goes off if the fireman stops moving. So in other words, if a fireman is down in a building, a noise will be emitted by that device so that the other fireman can go and rescue that individual. That flows into the next report, which is a report from our grant writer, Millennium Strategies. They were the grant writers for that pass device grant, which was received in 2015. And we think it's a great, great opportunity. Also, to update you on the 2016 awards, the Bergen County Open Space Fund has approved for a new playground in the city, $35,600. The Clicketer Ticket, hopefully you were not one of the recipients of a ticket, $5,000 from the state to administer that program with the police department. We also have received $170,860 from NJDOT for streetscape improvements on Main Street, and an $11,000 grant from NJDEP for recycling containers in our city parks. Number six on the manager's report is we had a shredding event last Saturday, and it was a great success. We thank Sears and Roebuck Company for allowing the city and the residents to use their parking lot. We also had the Fire Prevention Bureau on scene, so I would like to thank them and Fire Chief Freeman for their participation. We are planning another event in the fall, so this is for households only, not for businesses. So if you want to get rid of papers that are sensitive, they go into a great big shredder, and you don't have to worry about it yourself. The Summer Concert Series, it's upon us. July 4 is around the corner. We have the Infernos at Faschini Park on July 4. It's a Monday. At the Green, July 12 will be Beatlemania. July 19, New Beginnings, which is a Chicago tribute band. Eagle Mania on the July 26. And August 2 is National Night Out, and we also celebrate with a concert by Smooth, which is a Motown tribute band. Now to the topic that I'm sure most of you are here for. I can smile. Okay, let me start off. The fundamental responsibilities of the city council is to deliver essential services at the best possible cost to the taxpayer. Responsibility of the city manager and the CFO, Jim Mangen, who is beside me, is to provide the council with facts. To find out what any service will cost, the laws of the state of New Jersey requires that a city must go out to bid. Going out to bid is how the city becomes educated on the cost of services. Failure to become educated would be a failure of the city council's responsibility to you, the people who they serve in the city of Hackensack. The city is faced with the need to replace its sanitation trucks at an estimate of over $2 million with an ongoing replacement plan. Unfortunately, we have not been, as a city, over the last 15 years, very good at vehicle replacement, and that is not uncommon for any city or municipality. The cost in raising property taxes has prevented a lot of municipalities from doing that, and they put off the replacement of equipment. This truck replacement need has demanded that the council become more educated as to whether there would be a cost savings to the residents to privatize certain DPW functions. The need for truck replacement is a result of years of wear and tear on the sanitation trucks. At this point, there is absolutely no plan to do anything other than to become informed and educated on the issues. The bids received and the results of the financial analysis will be openly discussed and available to the public. Public comments will be invited at the first possible council meeting after the bids are received and analyzed, which is projected to be in the middle of August. Other than becoming educated, the council does not have any plans with regards to DPW. Our CFO, Jim Mangen, who is also our qualified purchasing agent, who handles the bidding of the city, the bid process, will now go over a few high points of the bid specifications, not only to educate the council, but also you that have come here today, and we hope that you have a better understanding of what the city is trying to do for you.
I'm going to go over the rules of decorum. I did it during the earlier executive session, during the public session. Any outcry from the audience? But let's start out with when you're at the podium. When you're at the podium, everybody gets five minutes to speak. We expect the audience to respect the people who are at the podium by not calling out or yelling out or making noises from the audience. If you do feel the need to cry out, you will get one warning. If you yell out again, you will be asked to remove by one of our police officers. It's very hard for us, especially in a big crowd like this tonight, to hear everybody that's up here, and we need to hear your voices when you're at that podium, and we're giving everybody the option to get up and speak at the podium. So we are also asking if you can say what you have to say, because there's a lot of people here, in less than five minutes, use two minutes. Not telling you have to use two minutes, but you have that option. You don't have to use the whole five. Don't feel obliged to or obligated to. And we're also asking for an 11 o'clock last call at the podium, all right? Which is almost three hours from now. So please, let's keep some civil order here tonight, and let's stick to the rules of decorum. This is just a presentation, all right? And like was said before, right now, we're not doing anything, folks. We don't have any facts to even base this on. So, Mr. Mangen, please.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council. As David indicated, what we're here tonight to talk about is our solid waste collection bid specs, which, since the last meeting, we've issued these soliciting proposals, you know, bid proposals. And hopefully, tonight, will answer some questions that people had. Most of the questions are going to come down to two particular areas. People want to know what it is that we're doing, and more importantly, why it is that we're doing it. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to start by just talking about the solid waste collection bid specs, just so that everybody's on the same page and knows exactly what it is that we're talking about. Now, in going out to bid for private garbage collection, it's important to understand what it is that we're talking about and what we're not talking about. The services that are going to be included include garbage collection, rubbish pickup, and our white goods pickup. The services that aren't included, you know, the ones that'll still be retained by our sanitation department, would be our recycling collection operation, our yard waste pickup, the garbage collection in our public parks, and the snow removal that's done currently by our sanitation employees. Now, there are a number of questions that I've received about the bid spec package, and I wanted to just run through some of those. What would the collection schedule be? The garbage collection, the schedule would be a twice-a-week pickup, citywide, all year long. The rubbish pickup would be a twice-a-month pickup, again, citywide, and that would also be all year long. The white goods pickup would remain exactly the same. It is where the resident would call our public works and make arrangements to have the white goods scheduled to be picked up. Okay? Important to realize that the schedule that we're talking about is the same exact schedule as our existing twice-a-week summer pickup schedule, the schedule that we're going to right now. And in fact, the schedule that we're anticipating, even the pickup days stay the same. If you're currently being collected on Monday and Thursday, you would continue to be Monday, Thursday. If you're Tuesday, Friday, you'll continue to be Tuesday, Friday as well. Okay, we've had questions about whether the city is going to still provide garbage cans to its residents, and the answer is yes. We're going to keep that program going. Currently, actually, we're doing this right now, we have two size garbage cans that are available. A lot of people don't realize that. There is the current, the 90-gallon container, which is the big container that we use right now, but we also have a smaller 60-gallon container. The thinking is that if we do go to twice-a-week collection year-round, some people may not need that large 90-gallon container, and they would have that option available to them. A lot of people are asking how long the contract would last. And the bid proposals that are out have to include pricing for contracts from one to five years. Okay? When we do the financial analysis, when the bids are open, is when we would give a recommendation as to how long the contract would be. Okay? The question that everybody is most interested in is how many workers will be affected. Now, unfortunately, as David indicated, at this point in time, that's impossible to say, okay, until those sealed proposals are opened, okay? Right now, it's impossible for us to determine what the cost savings would be and how many workers would actually be affected. In fact, there are a number of questions like that that can't be answered until the sealed proposals, as David indicated, are opened and studied. So when we get into the question of why is this being done, okay, that's the short answer. Okay? We need to solicit bid proposals to provide the answers to the questions that we don't currently have the answers to right now. So what we wanted to do is we wanted people to understand how it is that we got to this point, okay? And basically, it all starts with planning. David is a planner by trade. I happen to be a firm believer in long-term financial planning. And last year, when we looked at the six-year capital plan for the city of Hackensack, we realized that to properly plan for the capital needs of the city of Hackensack, the issue of garbage trucks has to be addressed. Now, garbage trucks have been brought up by members of the public at countless meetings, and nobody should think for a minute that the issue has been ignored. It hasn't been. It's something that we've been working on for a long time as part of our capital improvement plan, okay? Now, since 2014, that was only two and a half years ago, okay, we've spent almost $9 million in capital improvements. Now, those are improvements that have actually been completed, money that's actually spent. This isn't the bond ordinance for Johnson Park or the M&amp;M Building. These are improvements that we've actually done, okay? You see, we've done 2.0, I really can't see, but 2.3 million in road improvements, over $3 million in sewer improvements, 1.1 million in park improvements, okay, $407,000 in, I'm sorry, $807,000 in equipment, $400,000 in building improvements, and $840,000 in fire apparatus. That was the ladder tower that was purchased in 2014. And as we've indicated a few times, there's a lot more investment that's needed in our road and sewer improvements, in fact, in all of our capital areas. In fact, probably in a little more than a month, we'll be introducing a bond ordinance for the new fire engine that's needed. Getting back to the garbage trucks. Now, the increases in the solid waste budget for vehicle repairs, and by vehicle repairs, we're talking specifically about garbage trucks. The increases to the budget for the garbage truck repairs haven't kept pace with the actual expenditures. This graph shows the difference between what we've budgeted, which is the blue line on the bottom, versus what we've actually spent, which is the green line on the top. And you'll see that the largest gap occurred in 2013. In 2013, we budgeted $130,000 for garbage truck repairs. I'm sorry, $160,000 for garbage truck repairs. We actually spent over $360,000. Now, we tried to address that in the 2014 budget by almost doubling the budget. Budget went from $160,000 to $300,000, and we were still short. Now, you can see from the graph, if I use the larger font, that the only time that we actually budgeted enough money to cover the garbage truck repairs was in the 2015 budget, but that's deceiving, because in 2015, to get our trucks back in service, to service the community, we had to go out and lease garbage trucks. And by leasing garbage trucks, it drove the repair expenditures down, but the lease expenditures came up. Another way that we tried to cut back on the vehicle repairs is that we had the inter-local agreement with Maywood, which was terminated in 2015. Okay? What we were doing is we were doing all of the solid waste collection, all of the recycling collection for the entire borough of Maywood. Okay? Now, that contract was terminated for a number of reasons. Quite frankly, it was a bad deal for the city of Hackensack. There wasn't enough revenue coming in. The contract stated that we needed to dump Maywood's garbage, where Maywood had their contract, which was up in Nyack. If you remember, in 2015- If you remember, in 2014, gas prices were through the roof. But one of the, the main focus of terminating that contract was because of the wear and tear it was taking on our trucks, and it was impairing our ability to service our own community. Now, in just 2014 and 2015, just those two years, six garbage trucks averaged repairs of $178,000 for each year. Now, if you think about that, what that means is that we had six garbage trucks that we were spending almost $30,000 a year to repair. When we looked at the cost of new garbage trucks, we saw that six new garbage trucks could be purchased at a cost of about $200,000 a year for nine years, if we self-financed using short-term financing. In terms of our capital planning, before we commit 1.8 million dollars to new garbage trucks, what we needed to do, we needed to do our due diligence and look to see what alternatives were out there, okay? And this is what we spent the bulk of 2015 doing. We looked at leasing vehicles. As I said, we started leasing three vehicles in May of 2015. We returned one of them because the vehicle itself wasn't up to par. We're still leasing today two vehicles. We thought about purchasing used garbage trucks, because we need so many, okay? We looked at possibly purchasing used trucks. They're not in great condition, but they're certainly better condition than the trucks that we have in our fleet. The problem is, there's a problem with the local bond law with that, is that you can't bond for used equipment. You can only bond for new equipment. And if we wanted to purchase used garbage trucks, we'd have to put the money in our budget. If we were talking about one or two garbage trucks, possibly, not six, that would've just crippled the budget. The other alternative that we needed to take a look at is private garbage collection. And as David indicated, the only real way to find out what the costs are in private garbage collection is actually to solicit the bid proposals. Prior to that, what we did was, we looked at the solid waste collection bid results from other municipalities, okay? Now, every municipality is different, okay? But at least it gave us a starting point. And what we did was, when we applied those bid results to Hackensack, we saw that there was the potential for a significant cost savings. Now, I emphasize the word "potential" because every municipality is different, okay? But we looked at four municipalities, and the cost savings that we saw that could potentially be realized ranged from 500,000 all the way up to 1.3 million, okay? What that meant was that we really had an obligation to find out what our actual cost savings would be, if we were to privatize the garbage collection. And again, the only way to determine the actual cost savings is to solicit bid proposals that are specific for Hackensack, and then study the results. And that's the point in the process that we're at right now. The bids are scheduled to be open on August 17th. Once they're opened, at that time, we'll do a complete financial analysis, using real numbers and using Hackensack as the base, okay? If that financial analysis, and only if that financial analysis shows a cost savings, we in the administration will then prepare a detailed recommendation to the mayor and council, okay? That recommendation would focus on three main areas. First, the recommendation will show how we expect that the city will be cleaner as a result, how much, and exactly where the city would save money as a result of the contract, and again, very importantly, how will this recommendation affect the existing employees? Now, let me just pause here for a second, okay? Because when we talk about the existing employees, and we talk about people's livelihoods, okay? This isn't something that should be entered into lightly, not at all. We take that commitment very, very seriously. And in fact, our track record in that area, I believe, is very good, okay? We faced up to a $30 million tax appeal refund liability, and we took it head-on. And we're two-thirds of the way through a three-year plan to address that. There were no layoffs involved. We knew that the only way we were gonna get that $30 million liability down was gonna be hard negotiations and increased taxes. We got no relief from the state, okay? We were able to do that without anybody losing their jobs. There were no layoffs. As I indicated earlier, we terminated the solid waste and the recycling contracts with Maywood. Again, nobody lost a job. There were no layoffs, okay? That wasn't the intent, okay? We take that responsibility very, very seriously. Now, in terms of the recommendation and our existing employees, okay? Again, if there's a cost savings, the recommendation that we would prepare for the mayor and council, okay, would address exactly how many employees we intend to retain in the sanitation department doing the functions that we're not privatizing: recycling, snow removal, et cetera. How many of those employees would be transferred over to the Department of Public Works and other departments? And finally, how many employees would be offered full-time employment with the private contractor? Okay? One of the things that we stress was that, in the bid proposals, okay? The successful bidder, okay, has to offer any displaced Hackensack employee full-time employment. Now, you have to understand, that's what we consider to be the safety net, okay? It's our intention to, through a combination of transfers, through attrition, trying to fill in for either current retirees or upcoming retirees, we want to keep the number of displaced employees down to an absolute minimum. But in the event that any employees are displaced, they will be offered full-time employment with the private contractor. Once we do that recommendation, that detailed financial analysis and detailed recommendation, only then, when the mayor and council have that detailed information about the pros and cons of private garbage collection, that's the only time when we can have a full and proper debate on the issue. As David indicated, okay? That'll be shared with the public. We'll be soliciting the public's views, okay? We're not at that point right now. We're still at the point now where we're fact-finding. And again, as I indicated earlier, when people's livelihoods are involved, okay? We have to, we absolutely have to make sure that the information that's provided is accurate. We in the city administration, as David said, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to explore any and all efficiencies of service, you know, how we intend to deliver services, you know, in the most efficient manner. Along the same lines, we also, the city administration, also has a duty to provide the mayor and council with all the information that they need to make an informed decision. That's the reason that we're out to bid right now, is we need to find out, in real numbers and in applying the circumstances to Hackensack, what, if any, potential savings could be realized by privatizing our solid waste collection. And you have to understand that solid waste collection is just one area of a number of things. Again, we have to look at every area of what we're, of the services that we deliver, and figuring out how we can do it more efficiently. Again, going back to the tax appeal refund liability, we knew that we had to raise taxes to get that liability behind us. Because of that, we have to take a long, hard look at any and all areas where we could potentially look to save money, okay? Okay? Again, this is the process, this is where we're at in the process, okay? We're definitely not at the point where we're able to make any kind of recommendation. We can't talk about any, any actual cost savings. All of that'll be completed after August 17th, when the bid proposals are open.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. That's the end of the manager's report? Okay. Are you ready, Madam Clerk? Going with the meeting? Ready? Resolution 215-16.
Resolution 215-16 is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 23-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 50, entitled Schedule I, No Parking. This ordinance has been advertised for so much law and now falls out of public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public on this resolution, or this ordinance, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. You will have five minutes.
All right. Good evening, everyone who has attended the meeting, and to the council. My name is Zachary Husser, and I just listened to the bid process.
Mr. Husser, excuse me, sir. We're going through the docket. This is in particular to the ordinance which we just read, right? Public?
This is for the sanitation?
No, 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 no. This is about a traffic issue. Sorry. We're getting there, though. We gotta get through these. Anybody who wants to speak on the ordinance that was just read, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Sing. None motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and the State of New Jersey that ordinance number 23-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 216-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 24-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 52, entitled Animals, Banning the Sale of Dogs and Cats from Pet Shops.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 24-2016 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 28th, 2016, at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. And I'd like it on the record that I'd like any, in all pet shops that sell animals are notified of this, so that they have a right to speak, a chance to speak at the next meeting. Resolution 217-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 25-2016, an ordinance amending Part I entitled Administrative Legislation, Chapter 13A, entitled Condominium and Cooperative Unit Owners Advisory Board, Section II entitled Terms and Compensation.
I have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 25-2016 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 28th, 2016, at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at all regular meeting place, at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 218-16.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 219-16.
A resolution authorizing settlement with Teamsters Local 97 Benefit Fund for the Crossing Guards RX Benefit Order.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 220-16.
A resolution authorizing release of escrow for a project known as Ten Orchard Street.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 221-16.
A resolution authorizing the award of state contract for the purchase of Ford, 2017 Ford Police Interceptors for the Police Department.
I have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Resolution 222-16.
This is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Vision Media Marketing, Inc., as public relations consultant.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 223-16.
A resolution authorizing a tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated June 7th, 2016, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
I have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 224-16.
This is a resolution awarding the contract for the 2016 Summer Food Program.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 225-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
I have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killengetis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay. Before I move on with the consent agenda, is anybody from the council that needs anything removed?
No. I'd like to change a vote if I could. Am I able to do that?
You voted.
You, okay, okay, okay.
I would like to remove Resolution 232-16, please, 'cause I have a conflict there. Do you want to read the consent agenda first, or that resolution?
We'll do that one last, but that was the only one that wanted to be pulled, so the only one that was being pulled was 232-16?
Correct.
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure or supported by certification of availability of funds, any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda includes Resolution 226 through 231. Resolution 232-16 was pulled. Resolution 233 and 234 are part of the consent. 226 is a resolution authorizing recreation refunds.
227, resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for the 2016-17 term. Resolution 228-16 is a resolution reappointing a Class II special officer. Resolution 229-16 is a resolution accepting Main Street Business Alliance appointment to Cultural Arts Board. Resolution 230-16 is a resolution appointing City of Hackensack members of the Bergen County Regional Community Development Committee. 231 is a resolution authorizing correction of an incorrect dollar amount on resolution number 202-16 adopted at the May 17, 2016 meeting. 233-16 is a resolution recognizing Flag Day, which is June 14, 2016. And Resolution 234-16 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Judge Denise for the Hackensack Municipal Court.
I have a motion, please, to read the consent agenda as read.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye. Now I need Resolution 232-16.
This is a resolution authorizing ambulance reimbursement.
A motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
I abstain.
That completes everything.
Yeah. I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye. Yes, before we start, in case there's any newcomers, you go to the podium. Everybody will get five minutes at the podium. You come up, you give your name and address to the clerk. We ask that you keep your comments respectful, as we will respect you. We also, I need you to take note that if there's any comments from the audience while people are at the podium, you will get a warning. If you feel the need to speak out again or to yell out, you will be asked to leave and escorted out by a police officer. We're here to listen to you. We want to listen to you. And we respect your comments, and we expect the same back from the audience. With that said, I need a motion to open to the public? And we have an 11 o'clock last call. Everybody gets their five minutes, like I said before. If you don't need the five minutes, use a few minutes to be courteous to your neighbors. All right? Yeah. So I need a motion to open to the public, please? You did that. We're there. Okay. So, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Zachary Husser, and I'm a surviving resident of Hackensack. I listened to the gentleman give the presentation about the bid process and that the city hasn't made a decision. They're just looking at it. Incorrect. All right? Whenever you get the bid process, you're not only looking at it, you are about to take an action. Now, here's what privatization means. And you see, it's a personal issue. Okay? That's why so many of us are here now, because privatization affects one of your family members or somebody that has lived here in Hackensack for a long time. But what, this is what privatization means for a city administration. It takes the personal stuff out of the way. All right? So if a private company, which you can't tell who to hire... And, hold up. Hold it, wait a minute. I want you to listen, please. Now, I've been involved in privatization before, okay? I never really come up here and talk about what I did, but I was an investment banker at Wall Street for Blinder Robinson for many years, and I dealt with finance and the taking over of companies. So I'm telling you, not what somebody told me and not what I looked up in a book. I'm telling you what I have lived. When you take over and privatize an agency, when the municipality does that, there are three things that they're looking at. One, they eliminate longtime employees, okay, who have a lot of time in the agency. Two, they end contributions to the pension, because those employees are gone. Three, they destroy the union. All right? Now, those are three things that the folks in the sanitation department have worked hard for for many decades. I know, I've spoken to Mr. Williams about this many times, and he's a person who's lived in this town for a long time. Even though I've only been here 17 years, the length of time you've been someplace does not determine the quality of what you're talking about. Okay? Now, I've received the services from the sanitation department. I'm over at 208 Anderson Street, and they do an excellent job. And I'm going to end by saying this. Okay? I'm from South Carolina. It's an old quote. And I hope the police department is listening and the other municipalities. When they come for the sanitation at night, they're coming for you in the morning.
Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you, Reverend Jackson?
My name is Greg Jackson.
Please, folks.
79 Allen Street in Hackensack. I'm here representing myself, the Mount Olive Baptist Church, and the Fellowship of Black Churches of Hackensack. We have several pastors here from our churches, and we have many members here as well. I've asked also, as persons come up, to speak tonight, that they go out after they speak, because there, at least when I was out there an hour ago, there were a lot of people outside who wanted to get in, so hopefully that will be permissible.
Thank you for that.
I wanted to just say a couple of things related to the presentation. Forgive me, I don't remember your name.
Mr. Mangan, Jim.
Mr. Mangan. Mr. Mangan mentioned that, you know, we were here with the question, what and why? We're also here with the question of who? Who will the privatization of the sanitation department affect in our community? Now, I wish it was so that, you know, what I'm told, the figures may be off a little bit, but I think they're pretty close. We have roughly 400 employees in the city of Hackensack. At least, that's what I'm told. We have roughly 45 minority persons. Most of them work in the sanitation department. Now, I might be wrong by numbers, but I think percentage-wise, probably I'm pretty close to accurate. If I'm wrong, please correct me. So if you privatize the sanitation department, you literally destroy any kind of equity in terms of racial equity in our community at all. I wish it was so that we had lawyers and judges and all persons throughout the municipality placed in various places, and it would not, the impact of one department would not have the impact that it has right now if you decide to privatize this department. And I hear what you're saying, and, well, we might, we're going to do our very best to, you know, place people in other departments. My question is, what about the seniority rights? How will that impact those persons? Will they have the same seniority rights? My also, my question, my feeling also is that the city is under strain financially. I understand that. But if you needed a new police car, you go buy a new police car. If you needed a new fire truck, you go buy a new fire truck. You need new sanitation trucks, do what you do in all of the other departments. Go buy what you need for these men to do the job. It's the cost of doing business. We're building up our community. Personally, I'm all in favor of, you know, what's going on in terms of building new apartments. I do want you to have affordable housing in those apartments that people can live in this community. You want to have a tax base there, and so we're expecting for new revenue to come from those buildings. But somebody's got to collect the garbage. And I do not think it's fair to balance the budget on the backs of people who make the least. I do not think it's fair. I think we live in a diverse community. Everybody deserves a right to work in this community. And somebody would say, well, you're talking about blacks. No, I'm talking about bears. I'm talking about 25% of the population of Hackensack. And I'm talking about less than 10% of the people who work for Hackensack. I'm talking about those people who work for Hackensack, for the city, work in the lowest-paid jobs in the city, and what we're trying to do is get rid of them. Something's wrong with that. And then you got a question about, well, we're going to open the bids on August 17. That's when people are on vacation. That's why we're here tonight. You know, we might, I don't know where we'll be on August 17. Needs to be, we want you to hear us tonight. This is not too early. It's, we don't want to be too late. We want to be early rather than late, so that you can hear us. And this is really, the other thing, too, is about the men in the sanitation department. I talked to several of them. They're nervous about coming to speak for that job. They should not be intimidated. They collect our garbage.
Right.
They should not be nervous about coming here, and I would hope that the council would protect them if they decided to come and speak tonight.
Thank you, Reverend.
My five minutes up?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening.
How it is, Mark?
Is this thing working? Mark McCarty, The Wolf Place. I'm also the union rep that represents these workers who may be privatized if this plan goes through. First thing I want to talk about, Mayor, is the fact that we seem to have been aware that there was going to be a big attendance here tonight. We have fire marshal, we have extra police presence.
Right.
My understanding was the school board offered a larger venue, but the council chose... The council chose to disenfranchise Hackensack citizens and leave them standing outside.
Go ahead.
This is my time. We got to do better than that. That's, that's just really a shame. But to the issue at hand, it's an old saying, beware Greeks bearing gifts. It talks about the Trojan horse. It sounds like a great plan. It always sounds like a great plan walking in the door. We're going to save you money and give you better services. We're going to have a cleaner city. Well, does anyone really believe you're going to be able to do it cheaper, better, and all of that stuff? I'll sell you a bridge in Brooklyn if you really believe that. So look at these bids, because there's secrets to them. There's the fact that once you're locked into the bid, what happens the year after, and the year after that, and the year after that? What happens to your snowplow? You say, oh, well, those guys will have plenty of trucks. Our trash trucks plow the streets. Our sanitation guys plow. Look into Newark. They privatized. The last storm, they were snowed in. They didn't have enough equipment. They had to spend a lot of money, because nobody was contracted to do that kind of storm, and they had to take whatever contractor was willing to come in, they had to pay it. Talk about being over bowled. That's what's going to happen to you. Private sector workers, they have the right to strike. Public sector doesn't. It's built into the law to protect the citizens and make sure trash pickup happens. Does anybody remember New York City in the '70s, when the trash was piling high? Is that where we want to go? When you can't afford the price that the contractors are bidding at, are you going to watch the trash build up in the streets? Public sector workers, they've been working without a contract for almost two and a half years now. Your trash still gets picked up. So I don't buy into this fact that services aren't going to suffer. I don't buy into the fact that we're going to do this smoothly and minimal disruption. Civil service alone is going to be a nightmare. I'll tell you that because I've gone through layoffs. I'm the guy that has to manage them. And we never know what civil service is going to throw at us, because they come up with their rules down there, and they just impose it. So you're going to end up with actually more senior workers probably staying. The highest paid guys staying. The low guys, the guys that are sort of chief, they'll probably go out the door, so I'm not sure where your savings is going to come from. So it's going to be disruptive to the city. There's going to be legal costs, because when people are laid off and they sue for different reasons, you're going to have to pay for that. But let's talk about the real issue, because truthfully, to me, finances, services, eh, it's interesting. It's the human cost. And my two folks that spoke before me talked about it. There's a serious human cost here. You may say, oh, these guys will get hired by the new company. They are going to be forced into lower-paid jobs. They're going to be forced into jobs with no benefits, and they're going to be forced into jobs with no pensions. The fact is, is you're going to be stealing from them to save money. It's not going to be magically come from nowhere. You're literally going to be taking it out of their pockets so that you can put a couple dollars back into the pockets of the taxpayers. That's presuming the taxpayer actually gets to see those, and it's not spent somewhere else. The first gentleman that spoke talked about the fabric, breaking unions. Obviously, that's an issue that's close to my heart. I believe that unions are a core part of the fabric of the United States. It is a core to middle-class America. What we are looking at is driving these people further into poverty. These are not guys making a lot of money. When they get laid off and when they get these new jobs making less money, they won't be able to pay their mortgages. They will lose their homes. Their children won't have medical coverage. They are simply looking for some basic stuff. These are guys that work in the heat, the cold, the rain, the snow. And by the way, when we're home on holidays, most of the time, they're out there working. And we know what they ask in return? A living wage, healthcare for their families, and a modest retirement. Now, you're going to take that away from them as well. I say that the people of this city are more important than a few dollars.
I'm going to give you one, 10 more seconds, Mr. Carter.
And I am a taxpayer, and I'm willing to pay a little more to keep these guys working.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am very disappointed. My name is Diana Taylor Kennedy. I am not a real estate owner. I am a property owner. I own a home here in Hackensack. I pay good taxes. I pay school taxes, which is a lot of money out of my, every year. I don't have a child that ever went to school here. Okay? So I do not work for the city of Hackensack. But I want to be taken care of, being that I am paying. It's something very wrong that we come here to address an issue about sanitation, and they keep in the, about privatizing, and you tell us that y'all haven't made a decision. Y'all have made a decision. We want to know when you made the decision. How come y'all didn't tell us this before the election? Because I'm concerned, we are not being taken care of here in Hackensack. Our tax dollars are not being spent or evaluated in a professional way. As far as I'm concerned, from what I look at, it looks criminal. Something is wrong. Very wrong. And can we have Mark to represent us? As the people of Hackensack? Like I said, I own real estate. As the people of Hackensack, like I said, I own real estate. I am a property owner. I own the apartment building where they have, the city of Hackensack be getting money all through because the owners are, are collecting so much. I am a property owner. Own a house, pay a lot of taxes, want to be taken care of. And I'm a senior citizen. Senior citizen. We should be taken care of. We shouldn't have to worry about if somebody gonna come pick up. As it is, picking up garbage is a hardship. This one on this day, this on this day. You gotta pay for this, you gotta pay for that. Let this, this and this and that. I want to be taken care of. Along with those who are fighting for their jobs. And I knew about that privatizing and taking over too, because I used to work for Payne Weber. Now UBS Payne Weber. Okay? And I'm not seated too. People don't have no jobs. Take away the pension, come up with profit sharing. And then they talk about matching. They decide what they're gonna match. They don't keep that stable. So, all I know, I just want to be taken care of. I think something is very wrong with this. And, and I want somebody to ask, answer my question. When did y'all decide to bring bit of people into bed? On, 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 uh, for, for, uh, to replace the, the garbage?
Mrs. Kennedy will answer that after the public speaks. We will, after the public speaks, we'll have our public comments.
And then, and then I come in here and whatnot. You don't have enough flyers for people to take. With all these resolutions and whatnot. Want people to vote on them? Something wrong with that. Look like it's a plan. Something is very wrong. That's all I got to say.
Brownita Sissy Sharif, Second Street in Hackensack. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask the two questions, uh, ask the question that I asked last time before I go into the support for the DPW. Um, the radon and the lead test. I have that, still have that concern with Carver Park. Mr. Manager, Mr. Tros. You don't have to speak now because you didn't speak before when I asked you. I did speak to Kathleen, uh, recently about that, and we're supposed to find out if that was done. My concern public is that in Carver Park, the radon and the lead test, were or were not made. We're getting ready to put a splash pad there for our children. We don't want any problems down the road for our children because of the ground. So...
That test was done.
Everything was done at that park? Radon, lead, everything?
Around the splash park.
Asbestos moved, removed completely out of the building?
At the splash park.
Okay, and the ra- all the asbestos out of that building?
The, the building will be a new bathroom that will be utilized by the public around the splash park.
Okay, and the building that's there will not be utilized by the public?
Not for the splash park, no.
Okay, but for the public, is there still any asbestos in that building?
Not that, what I, not what I've been able to find, no.
Okay, can we have that rechecked?
All right, let's stop with the back and forth.
Thank you.
Sissy, please go forward.
Okay. I also, um, wanted to state Hackensack Police Department for recent, um, help with my home with, uh, some special things that I had going on there. I wanted to give them their kudos for that. Uh, of course, I'm here in support of the DPW. I wasn't completely sure what all of the issues were. But, the community is outraged about what is going on. Um, the recommendation I would recommend is communication. There's never any good communication with the public on what you guys wanna do. That dome was thrown at us, uh, all of that. I, you hear, you hear people in the background talking about the dome. You can't do what you wanna do when the community voted you in. You need to communicate and talk with the people. It's, this is not your city. This is all of our city. This is everybody's city. I see Martin just being a little ashamed of what's going on here today. Yeah, because it's just a terrible thing. You have to communicate with the people. We don't want the element of surprise. I see these guys every morning. I don't know everybody by name, but I offer a bottle of water to anybody, whatever their name is. So come on, let's, let's be real here. There's a lot going on in the city. You guys have done a lot of good work. I have to tell you that. You have done a lot of good work. But all this undercover stuff, the way we see it, we don't like it. We are the majority, and there's plenty of people looking, looking in here, look like they qualified for this job here. So, let's get together, let's communicate with the people, because that's a big damn part.
Steve Gilroy, 304 Clinton Place. And just, real quickly, you guys, I'm still waiting on the Faschini Park estimate. You guys said you were into an estimate, and then the next step was a bond ordinance. This is a sham. There's gonna be no study. You're gonna approve this when everyone's away on vacation. That's all it is. Just call it what it is. But, I really miss, you know, Amel did his ninety day progress report when you guys were ninety days and those quickly went away. A couple of your crowning achievements in office. More employment lawsuits, including political hush money to one of your cronies, Anthony Rotino. We're on our fourth city manager in your term. I guess it's easy to get someone to be beholden to you when they're a year unemployed and they need the job. We've been through, we've been through two failed PBA negotiations. First time around, they got, they gave back up to thirty-five percent of their health insurance and took one and one and a half percent raises, and gave back their five steps to nine steps for new officers. This time, they offered no increases, and where are we? A filing for arbitration. What are we arbitrating? There was, to my knowledge, there was no offer back to them. Now, we're union busters. That's what you guys are. That's your legacy thus far for three years. We did that to the police. We have a white collar collective bargaining unit that's two and a half years without a contract. My understanding is they came to term six months ago and are still waiting for a signed contract. Why won't we give a union a contract? We have sanitation and DPW, two and a half years without a contract, and now we're looking, and now we're looking to privatize our sanitation. So now, we're gonna recap. We don't have the money to pay our police their contractual steps, which we have frozen for our new officers. We don't have the money to give our white collar bargaining unit their contract and increases. We wanna consider privatizing city jobs to save the money that we don't have. But, we have the money to spend twenty-one million dollars on political talking points and campaign promises. We have that money. You guys have put bullets, band-aids on bullet holes with this sanitation issue. I came here over a year ago and talked to you about your six-month lease of garbage trucks that didn't even work when they got here. There were guys driving them in reverse back to the garage. The transmissions dropped out going up the hills in the fifth ward. They drove back to the garage in reverse because the transmissions dropped on brand-new leased vehicles. So, we can also have our campaign manager financed on the city dime. We can give Dave Tros his seventy-five hundred dollar raise. We can give Jim Mangan his seventy-nine hundred dollar raise and an increase in two thousand and sixteen. We can give Councilman Metaglia's wife a twenty-one percent raise. But it's all okay. If you guys haven't seen it, or read it, or seen it on the news, it made national headlines. The city of Hackensack is burning. We are busting our unions. But it is all gonna be okay because John and Kathy are not supporting Donald Trump. I'm relieved. I feel so much better that Donald Trump's not gonna be the president because John and Kathy are endorsing him. Did that one hurt? Did that one hurt? Because it hurt me. It hurt me. It hurt me that your priorities, your priorities...
We're up here, not back there.
It hurt me that your priorities were that press release and not taking care of our citizens and our workers.
One has nothing to do with the other.
Yes he does. Your priorities are out of line. Your priorities are out of line. You can sit in that back room and take pictures signing a change of party affiliation rather than negotiating through him with our unions. That's a problem. And that's all I've got, other than, I would ask that, other than giving our unions all of their contracts, you guys just do exactly what you need to do to keep the lights on for the next year until qualified and competent people come in and take over.
Who's next?
Go back to the line. Back to the line.
Excuse me. I didn't realize he was trying to... Come to order, please. Come to order, please. Listen, at the order, if this meeting does not come to order, I want everybody to come up here and give their opinion. But we're gonna keep order. If we don't keep order, we're gonna close the meeting. All right? So all I'm asking for is to keep order, give people a chance to speak, show some respect, all right? And we'll get through this night, please. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Curran, pregnant of Bergen County NAACP. This is, uh, kinda hard to follow. And I sat here and wrote, rewritten my notes. But, uh, I guess I'm gonna bring it to you from a personal standpoint. And we understand why we here. These gentlemen risked the possibility of losing their employment, in which, of course, you see the dissatisfaction with everybody else. But, but again, I think you've heard already the opinions on the privatization, but I just wanna read some if you can indulge me for a moment. Welcome to the city of Hackensack. Hackensack is a unique and diverse city on the verge of Renaissance. We're a home to the Bergen County Judiciary County Government, well-renowned medical center, nationally-recognized educational institutions. The city is conveniently located among, along Route seven, Route four, seventeen and eight, excuse me. And also served by two New Jersey Transit stations providing frequent services to New York via Hoboken and the City Caucus. Our downtown bus transfer stations provide access to virtually anywhere. Our history dates back to sixteen hundreds, and General Washington was briefly headquartered during here, during this famous seventeen seventy-six retreat. Forty-five thousand people are proud to call Hackensack home. They're not forty-five thousand, but I think the voices you hear probably are acquainted to forty-five thousand right now. This young man right here with the red hat, I hope you don't mind me calling him out. I saw him last week over by the, uh, where were we? By... Right by DPW. And I stopped for a moment to speak to him. I told him I'll be here June fourteenth. He was smiling with exhilaration that people recognize what he's done. And at the time, I was witnessing with his coworker. Was he with you? Yeah, you know, in the discussion of the possibility of not having a job the next morning. It was really endearing and I saw it really hurt. And I can imagine if it's just him, what everybody else is feeling. I know myself, it's quite comforting to wake up in the morning and know I have somewhere to go. I know myself, serving twenty-five years as a police officer in Inglewood, having the opportunity to retire, and realized that my service ended in a pension, healthcare, and everything else. And I, I, I am assuming they all expect the same. Can we agree on that?
Yes.
All right. So again, to wake up the next morning and realize that you don't have that anymore. To wake up the next morning and look at your family and go, how will I take care of them? To think twenty years down the line and say, I would like to retire, but I have to now start all over again. Mr. City Manager, is that a concern you have to deal with?
Every day.
Sir, is that a concern you have to deal with? So, uh, just put yourself in their place. All right? Now I'm gonna take it personal again. I'm from the fine progressive city of Inglewood. In my forty-eight years of living there, I recall three times this attempt was made. The community came out, and they didn't wanna hear that. They said, we're gonna recognize there's gonna be an increase in taxes, but the quality of service we're getting, we can deal with the increase. We can deal with making that phone call down to City Hall saying, I need my garbage picked up. I forgot to put it out. That personalized service meant so much to the residents of Inglewood. So what are we gonna sacrifice, or what cost, to the residents of Hackensack? I've spoken to many of the residents. And some have said they are willing to deal with the tax increase. However, we don't wanna sacrifice our service. Again, going back to the city of Inglewood, I take great pride in a couple of the workers from Inglewood, from DPW who are nice to come. I take great pride in walking down the avenue and watching them spend the money they've made for the city of Inglewood investing back in my community. I think that's a big value. Specifically in government, you have people who get jobs here and take the money and go elsewhere, and you don't see a dime drop back in their community. And I'm pretty sure, if I'm not mistaken through my little research, there's a large percentage of these gentlemen on DPW that resides in the community of Hackensack. So there is a giveback. And I hope that is all taken into consideration when we make this decision. But I can tell you this. I can proclaim myself as the president of NAACP, and I will put upon the membership that we will stand here every meeting to make sure these individuals are heard and their protection of the job that's been put in place. This out, excuse me, this outsourcing or privatizing, Harvard Business Study said it doesn't work. It's proven. We can privatize all we want. We're gonna pay on this end. You can privatize all you want. You're gonna deal with the lawsuits. Because you're gonna have these so-called managers overseeing these gentlemen violating their rights, hence causing the NAACP ACLU to step in and get involved. Then, the board in the township itself, I'm sorry, the city itself's gonna encounter a problem? I'm sorry?
Just to let you know, your, your buzzer went off, so you got your five.
I got my five?
Yeah, you got your five. I'm sorry, but everybody gets five.
Well, I'll say this in two seconds.
Go ahead, hurry up.
Didn't work in Teaneck, it's proven. I own property in Teaneck, thirty dollars a month, do not cover it. I will close on this, Mr. Mayor. The NAACP of Bergen County, the State Conference of the State of New Jersey NAACP will be here standing strong with these gentlemen and their ladies.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. David, I, I, Mr. Tros, I'm reading the press release, and, and you say in the third paragraph, "City Manager David Tros says bringing in a private vendor would dramatically improve services for city residents because garbage will be collected twice each week throughout the entire year instead of just the summer. This will be a significant improvement for homeowners and will help keep the city cleaner." That doesn't sound like exploration. That sounds like a decision, sir. You know, there's an adage, uh, liars may figure, but figures don't lie. And the dangerous thing I'm about to do is to correct Reverend Jackson, and I, I, I gotta be careful. But I, I, as you know, I'm sure, the, the city's, uh, EEO fives, that's what you report to the federal government on the ethnic breakdown of your workforce. It's not ten percent. There's approximately... Well, the, you know from the census, there's twenty-four percent of the city are African-Americans. Only five point eight percent, five point eight percent, and it's dropped in the two, uh, EEO fives that were provided to me. In the two, and that was two periods. Went from, uh, eight point five or eight point two down to five point eight. Now, what's interesting, it's also said that intelligence isn't just learning from your own experiences, it's learning from your, someone else's experiences. Now, I look around and I see Judge Robinson here tonight. Sandra Robinson, former deputy mayor of the city. In nineteen ninety-one, that council explored. And Reverend Jackson, I saw him, I said, you know, you haven't changed. You look exactly the same. God bless you. And I heard him tonight, he's just as eloquent as ever. And I remember Deputy, Deputy Mayor Robinson saying, realizing, this, this was just the calamity, a calamity, and swayed the council with good sense. You can't put a price tag on this. These are people. These are human beings. And, and, you know, I, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say something. I still don't understand. I, you, you lord yourselves, you claim to embrace diversity. Not from what I've seen. I saw on July first, two thousand and thirteen, the person with the second high vote not become deputy mayor, and I still don't understand that. Except... And then I saw the, the prize debacle, and we got from the deputy mayor, lesson learned. Your famous two-word statement. It just clears every mistake you made. Lesson learned, lesson learned. You humiliated the African-American community. You know that. And... There's another part to this, and it's a follow-up on the David Sims not being deputy mayor. There's a lawsuit pending in the United States District Court from former councilwoman Rose Greenman. I'm named in it, but you're named in it as well, Kathleen and John. And I'm gonna read what's in there. Further, even though Sims received the second-most votes of any city council member, and thus should have been named deputy mayor per prior agreement, Canestrino and LaBross refused to permit Sims to become deputy mayor. LaBross then referred to Sims constituents as ends. I won't say the word. And stated he would rather let Sims constituents riot than have Sims be named deputy mayor.
Time to step down, Mayor. Time to step down.
John, I don't know if that's true. I, I like to think it's not. But I was here at the last meeting when a contingent of the African-American community came out and took you to task over the, the prize debacle. And the words that came out of your mouth, the tell, John, your poker player, the tell. You people, you people.
And I explained myself that night.
And why are you going to the gavel, John? Why are you going to the gavel? I'm not out of work.
Go ahead. You're right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I think I've said enough. I think maybe, you know, a lot of people have sat in that seat, John. Varying talents, varying intelligence, varying beliefs. But I don't think anyone was a racist. And if you are, I think you need to consider resigning. Recall, recall, we need a recall.
Next, please.
Jason Nuttermacher, Overlook Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. Let me first say, Mayor, you know, I'm on the Board of Education, Mr. Stein's here as well. No, we've been, we've had a Board of Education meeting at 2:00 in the morning and we let everyone who came there that night to speak, speak. Putting a curfew on 11 o'clock because you may not like what they have to say, that's ridiculous.
We're just asking for, we're not necessarily enforcing, all right? If there's a lot of people here, people are gonna get a chance to speak, that's what I opened with.
All right.
And we're just shooting for 11.
We're shooting for 11, all right.
Just asking people...
Like, like we're shooting for bids with the, uh, with the sanitation.
Please.
Mayor, Mr. McCourt referenced it earlier. In an effort to be cooperative, yesterday morning, I did extend an invitation to you and the city manager for the city to use the Hackensack High School Auditorium, which seats 650 people, to accommodate the public this evening, so that more people could attend tonight's meeting without having to worry about an occupancy limit. You did respond to me this morning, essentially saying it wasn't enough notice. I, although yesterday at 10:30 in the morning, over about 40 hours' notice, I don't know how that's not enough notice, but so be it. I gave suggestions as how this city could let the public know about the venue change. That invitation was declined, which is essentially depriving citizens' rights to attend a public meeting this evening. This is not the transparency that this council promised. Much the way of bullying employees, secret backroom deals, and political patronage, which have all defined this council's term of office, this is yet another example of how hypocrisy is a dominant theme for the last three years in this council chamber. I once again invite you to use the High School Auditorium after the bids have been opened in mid-August and early September. I hope that's enough notice. I'm sure some of the sanitation guys will help me with the tables.
Thank you.
Moving on, to the voter registration photo op we all saw last week. No one at all cares what your national political affiliation is. There's not one person here that went to bed that evening saying, thank God, John and Kathy switched parties. Here, however, is what families did say in the city that night. What's gonna happen to my father? What's gonna happen to our family's health insurance? What's gonna happen to my husband's pension? Why can't these decent, hard-working men and women get a fair contract? Why can't we give our cops a fair deal? No one is fooled by your disingenuous pandering. I noticed the following, I noticed the following fact was conveniently missing from your, your press release, which is probably paid for by taxpayer funds and all the news reports. It was only when you knew a certain segment of our community was enraged by your decisions here in recent weeks and that you knew different advocacy groups were coming here tonight, that you performed that charade in the hopes that it would deflect criticism going forward. In the past year, the candidate you have referred to, as this is filling yourself from, has made several controversial statements. Why now? Why the photo op now? You see, no one cares about your political affiliation, they care about their jobs. No one cares about who you vote for in November, they care about their children having health insurance. They don't care about Democrats or Republicans, they care about our police officers, they care about their children's college education. Last meeting, in an effort to criticize me, the deputy mayor bizarrely went out of her way to comment about her own daughter, her own daughter's college education. I'm now forced to wonder, don't all of our neighbors have the same right to someday applaud their own children's educational opportunities, or does that only apply to members of this council? I can't help but notice that much like in the hospital deal last year, which cost this city fifteen million dollars, the leadership up there has once again been duped. Maybe a little less time on photo ops and a little more time on research. Because anyone who's bothered to spend five minutes researching the sanitation issue, as it appears most of us here have this evening, you will find that it won't save you money in the long run and it will in fact cost even more money. But here's a closing thought at the CFO's presentation of alternatives. If the city didn't give back that fifteen million dollars to the hospital, if the city didn't give Mr. Battaglia's spouse not only one raise, but two, if the city didn't give the CFO and city manager raises, and if the city is not spending seven million dollars on a tribute for a soccer dome to Mr. Battaglia, my guess is we would have plenty of money to adequately fix the trucks that this council has decided to let me carry. We would have the money to purchase new trucks. By the way, I did the quick math, 1.8 million over nine years, you figure the soccer dome is seven, you gave back to the hospital fifteen.
Jason, thank you.
I'm at the...
Five minutes.
And we would have the money to give contracts to the, to our city employees.
Jason, look behind.
It's not too late.
These people.
Do the right thing.
My name is Robert Curry. I've been a citizen for 47 years. I pastor a church and a people. And I'm here with Pastor Fontaine, Pastor Mays, Pastor Browns. I'm not a politician, but I believe in fair politics. I believe that you should treat me like I would treat you. And so therefore I rise to say that I stand with my president, Pastor Jackson, and the statement that he made here concerning our workers and our citizens in this city. God bless you, and when you make your decision, before you make it, you ought to pray.
Excuse me, sir, we're gonna take three, four, five-minute recess, all right? Give a motion, please, to go in the back for setting. Settle in. Everybody, please settle in. Please settle in, please, thank you. I need a motion to open the meeting again, please. Reopen the meeting. Go call.
Councilmember Battaglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons is absent. Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. All right. Sorry for the delay, sir, thank you.
Evening, council, my fellow residents, my name's Ben Farrey, live on Anderson Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Hackensack. Proud to say that I grew up in the city, went through the school system, purchased a home here, mostly I'm a Hackensack police officer. Growing, growing up in Hackensack my entire life, now working for its police department has given me a unique view of this community, culture, and its history. I see how things are and reflect on how they were when I was growing up here, and I have to say, things have gotten a lot better. Any resident who pay attention will agree with me that this city's crime has dropped, has become a better place to raise a family, and some of the problem areas of town have turned into up-and-coming parts of the community. I like to think that this part of the city's improvement is from young and motivated police department. To be noted that 50% of this department has been working for the city of Hackensack for six years or less. With that in mind, it's still creating such a large dent. It also means that half the police department is still climbing the pay scale. So when the city council allows the same manager to legally freeze the pay scale of its officers, it affects half the department, affects half of us, our lives, our families, livelihoods, ability to pay bills. We have officers out there who put their lives on the line and take home about $400 a week after taxes. That's about $20,000 a year. For some people, that's a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but those people aren't asked to risk their lives and their welfare and potentially live family members at home alone the way that we are. Some people are probably thinking, this is Hackensack, how much danger can there really be? So those people, let me open your eyes. That last year, city of Hackensack had more officer-involved shootings than Patterson did. Council, when you allow the city manager to continue his unfair labor practice, you're allowing him to send messages. Right now, he's sending messages to the sanitation workers, to the police department and other unions in town. Letting him send messages that it's okay to break the law and go against state court rulings, allowing him to alienate its employees by consistently playing hardball with its unions. And lastly, you're letting him tell the young and motivated officers of this department that the city council doesn't care that they can be hurt, killed, or permanently injured as long as it fits the city's tight budget. I can see firsthand the passion that this department has for helping its citizens and in turn the passion that the citizens have for this department and all of the employees that this Hackensack has. And it's all making Hackensack a better place. I'm employing the residents of Hackensack as well as the city council members to honor that passion we have. Make right unfair practices, let us know we matter to you, and make us believe that the service we provide to the city and this community means more to you than a dollar's and cents on a budget. Thank you.
Young man, come back and give them your name.
Yes, we need your name.
Thank you.
Would the young man who just spoke come back and give your name, please?
Ben Farrey Anderson Street.
Ben, how do you spell the last name?
Anderson Street.
Thank you. Reverend, how are you?
All right. Robert H. Robinson, Kansas Street, Hackensack. There's a lot going on here tonight. Number one, I wish you had listened and got it in the high school, so everybody would be more comfortable. But you're saying time didn't permit. But we have a lot of problems here. We have to see about our sanitation workers. You're saying you gotta cut 25 to save money and do all of that. If we really realize what happened in 2001, we went to war. We fought wars, two wars on a credit card in these United States that we are still paying for, that we was promised then by politicians that it was gonna be paid for with the oil from Iraq. And that oil from Iraq is sealed in Iraq and someone else is using it right now. But we have to come together. We know the city may need money, but you got to tighten the budget somewhere. You got peoples making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, take and ta, cut them 10%. Let's get real about sacrificing. Instead of sacrificing the whole department, that you're gonna affect families, the working families, let's come together and look at it. Cut that 10% off the top of those hundred thousand dollars and above, because I'm sure that they can cut out a little coffee or a little other thing to take and, take care of that 10%. But these guys, I've got their children in school, they gotta pay their rent and mortgage, they gotta take care of themselves. I understand that health care is a big problem. We got one of the best hospitals in the world. Why not tell them that we want to make a agreement with them for health care? Why not go up there and sit down with the Hackensack and say, come on, let's make a deal. Let's get our health through them. And because you're the city, they're the largest, one of the best 50 hospitals in the country, they claim, and we got to take a look at how we can negotiate and save money right now. How do we save money? How do we go with other towns? You got other towns, you said you was working with Maywood, you got Teaneck, you got Inglewood, you got all these other towns around you, there are some things that you can save. Get a good mechanic and you can save some of those trucks that you got.
We have one there, yep.
You need a good mechanic to go and service those trucks on a consistent basis. I'm an autoworker. And I know that if you built the truck, if you oil it, change the oils in it, grease it, and do the basic truck keep on it, it'll last a long time. So let's get busy and do what we have to do and stop all of the sacrificing. And when you have your next meeting, let's look at a large venue, change the venue quick. Cause the word got out that you was gonna have it long before that and just, you know, you know that you were dealing with all of these, it was gonna be a packed house. So we got people standing outside that can't get in, we got peoples inside that's standing up. Then we could have went to the high school and everybody would have been a little bit better, cause we paid for the high school too.
152 First Street, Inglewood, New Jersey, Sampson Onomonu, also Teamsters shop steward.
Would you say your name again, sir, please?
Sampson Onomonu.
Onomoni?
Onomonu, O-N-U-M-O-N-U. In the city of Inglewood, in 2008 through 2010, we were faced with the same problems. We had all kind of, people come in, tell us about privatization, what it costs, what parts of the city they would service. What we did was we came up with a team that were supporting these automated trucks that were side loaders, something like what you had done here in Hackensack years ago. The team, we didn't just order the trucks, the team went through all barrels, they talked it over with municipalities that had gone private, they talked it over with municipalities that had tried it, they wanted to know where they failed at, where it was successful at. For 815,000, we purchased three of these automated trucks in June of 2013. We rolled the trucks out, we have a program similar to the city of Hackensack, two 95-gallon drums, one for recycling, one for garbage. The trucks, these trucks service over 90% of our streets, we have tight streets similar to Hackensack and certain wards, and for the other 10% of our more narrow streets, cul-de-sacs, dead ends, things of that nature, are serviced by rear loaders that are fitted with tippers. One of the other municipalities that we were impressed with was Paramus. They function very well, they have a very strong DPW, along with ourselves, you know, we're able to, we're able to reassign anywhere from six to eight employees on a daily basis to parks and other various places in the city to provide a better service for the city of Inglewood. Also, workman's comp numbers are down, insurance is down, and it's a lot safer for our employees. So, oh, also, the, the report also revealed that Hackensack said that they bought the wrong trucks. So, no, this is a real report. So again, our, our pilot program is very successful in the city of Inglewood, we have the same problems that you do, and again, this program works, it's a great, a great place to revisit, you guys.
Could you leave your number with the city manager, please?
Sure. And you know, furthermore, I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's, it's better to have your own. You don't want to get handcuffed by one of these private companies, snowing outside, somebody sick in your home, ambulance can't get down the street, and you call these private companies, you gotta wait till they get here, they show up at your DPW yard, they do their pre-trip, then they go out and they plow your streets when they feel like it. Whereas when it's us, we live here, it's our neighborhood, we show up, we do the job, hurricanes, it doesn't matter, trees down, whatever the case may be, even something as small as potholes, these guys are much more than just garbage men.
Good evening.
Mayor and council, my name is Mark Corillo. I'm a Hackensack police officer and have been a resident of Hackensack since January of 2003. While growing up in Hackensack, it became my childhood dream to become a police officer in this city. In January of 2015, my dream became reality and I was sworn in along with seven other men and women. Upon my appointment, my starting salary... Upon my appointment, my starting salary was $33,000 gross pay a year, earning me a bi-weekly paycheck of $850 net. I was informed that upon completion of each year, I would receive an annual step increase, and that I would reach my top salary upon the completion of nine years of service. When our union contract expired at the end of 2015, I became aware of a ruling that stated, "The municipality was allowed to, but not required, to freeze employees' pay at their current step until the new contract was negotiated." The city of Hackensack chose to freeze the step increases despite the financial hardship it created for its employees and the effect it had on employee morale. The ruling was overturned at the beginning of this year, and the courts determined that, effective immediately, the municipalities were no longer allowed to freeze steps and were required to pay step increases as outlined in the previous contract. In January of this year, the other officers and I that were hired were supposed to get our first step increase, which would pay us $44,000 a year. As of today, the city officials have chosen to ignore this case law, and we are still being denied our wage increase. However, as you all know, the most valuable commodity of any organization is its people. In this case, the people who come to work and risk their lives, prepared to make the ultimate sacrifice and give our lives for the citizens we protect and serve. The city manager stated in the last council meeting that we need to support our police officers, and that he supports our police officers. I'm requesting that the city give its officers their step increase as per the judge's order. Being stuck at $33,000 a year has caused a financial hardship for all those affected. Some of us took a large pay reduction to become a Hackensack police officer under the promise of an annual step increase. We have budgeted, borrowed, and stressed ourselves as thin as possible. Many of us have families to support, student loans and mortgages. As a Hispanic-American and someone who was raised in the city of Hackensack, as well as someone whose family also resides in this city, I can think of no place else I would rather work, due to its cultural diversity and the personal connection I have to Hackensack. Honestly, I have the honor of helping make a safer place for my mother, sisters, brothers, and father to walk down the street. However, this pay freeze had made myself and other officers look for jobs in other communities. We do not want to leave our employment with the city of Hackensack, but cannot afford to stay here making $850 every two weeks. As police officers, we enforce the laws of the state of New Jersey. Due to our hard work and dedication, we have lowered the crime rate by 40%, and Hackensack enjoys the lowest burglary rate it's had in 50 years. I am asking the council to abide by the judge's decision and give the officers their step increases during this contractual impasse. Thank you for your time, and hopefully this matter is resolved shortly.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Gavis, how are you?
Good, Mayor, council members, 112 Hudson Street. Um, I am here because there is an issue very important to the city of Hackensack and its residents and its workers, to get private the sanitation department. Few weeks ago, you approved the funds for projects in the recreation department, which I think they were a little expensive, but I think it's a good investment for the city. Today, I am here just to let you know that I disapprove the idea of get the sanitation department private. I think it is terrible that that happens. We have a great, great sanitation department with great people working for us for many years. They deserve respect, and they deserve an opportunity to proudly continue working for the city. Also, we have to look at the, not only the money, but also the quality of life. These people bring an excellent quality of life in the city, good environment, they work from five, three o'clock in the morning every day, and they need, we need to keep them in their positions, we need to keep the sanitation department in the way it is. This is not a matter of dollars, this is a matter of be sensible to people, and I think it's important that you hear that from the different people that we live in the lovely city of Hackensack. Thank you very much.
Mr. Eisen, how are you?
Good evening, John. Larry Eisen, 390 Maple Hill Drive in Hackensack. I have been a resident here for 48 years, a proud resident of Hackensack, and I have always been a supporter of this administration. But on this issue, I have to disagree with your plans. I pay over $16,000 a year in taxes. I do not wanna save $50 or $100 a year personally on the backs of 32 of my fellow citizens. It is an immoral decision to damage our fellow citizens for such insignificant savings. I agree we have financial problems, but do not take that out of the flesh of our sanitation workers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr.-
My name is Gordon Johnson, a member of the New Jersey State Assembly representing the 37th District, which is where we are now, the city of Hackensack.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
I've heard, we've heard a lot tonight, we've heard a lot tonight, but I've heard very little about what we call human capital. The men, in, the men, in this case just men, who work for DPW, who I stand beside, in support of, and their union, deserve a decent salary and a future. We do not- There are many people who use public service, the public sector, as a doorway to the middle class. That's what it's designed for, that's how a lot of people are taking advantage of that, and because of their unemployment, they have kids in college, they can pay to get their kids to college, they can get decent homes, and what have you. Also, if these employees are let go, residents of Hackensack, they will not be a part of your revenue source. They're, they can't pay property taxes, they can't shop in your town, they cannot spend money if they don't have a job. So I say to you that it sounds good to save a few dollars in privatization, and that's when the council in Inglewood years ago, and we discussed privatizing our DPW, and we chose not to do it, because we thought our employees who reside in Inglewood were more important than saving a few bucks and, and not knowing exactly what the quality of service would be. So I say to you, let us try to, or let you, I'll work with you if you wish, let us try to do what we can to ensure these young men continue working at DPW, and also, just as important, get their contract resolved. But two years out of a contract is extremely long time. So I'll close by saying thank you for listening to me, again, I stand in solidarity with the men of DPW and your union, and recognizing I do this because in Trenton, in Trenton, we have a governor who has a disdain for public employees, does not respect public employees. Do not let that perception happen here in Hackensack. Thank you.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. I haven't seen this room, or you haven't seen this room either, this packed since the EMTs, how about that? Which you were very passionate about, John, and you wanted to save the eight, save their jobs. Now you got four times that, and you're willing to put them on the chopping block. Come on, do you see the hypocrisy of this? Do you see this? That there were eight EMTs? Oh, and how did that ambulance privatization work out for us? Now the residents have to pay and get reimbursed for it. How did that work out for us? Not so great, it's not equal or better. And these are people who live here, I said this last meeting, these are our neighbors. Why would you do this to them? Why would you do this? Why is this even on the table? Oh, I know, two guys that don't even live in the city think it could save us money, and they're going to advise you. We live here, we live here, this is at our door, at our front yard, this is us, these are our neighbors, these are people we see now twice, three times a week outside our door, that we get to know, we trust, okay? And to even consider this is crazy, especially when you were so adamant about the EMTs. I don't know how you could even consider this, when you, and, and the venue, the venue, you were crazy about the EMTs that time, that it was so packed and they didn't give a bigger venue. You had the opportunity to give a bigger venue, and you didn't do it. It's like you don't care, and I'm not saying you do not care, it looks like you do not care, okay? It also looks like union busting. What, what's the problem? Sanitation, the police, the white collar, it looks like union busting. I'm telling you what it looks like, this is the perception on this side, okay? You haven't said or done anything that's shown me anything different, okay? You, you, our police, our sanitation, our city employees, I have said this to you before, you have to treat them with respect, and you have to treat us with respect, too, Mr. Trost, okay? You work for us, okay? I wanna get back to something I asked earlier that I really did not get an answer. Did Vision Media write that press release of you, the mayor and deputy mayor changing parties?
One of the principals was involved, but it was at no cost to the city, it was, it was done-
So they did it as a favor to you, and they got a contract. How does that look? How would that look to you, Mrs. Canestrino and Mr. LeBrusse on this side, if the previous council had done that? How would it look? How would it look? It looks bad.
That's your one warning-
Kathy, don't tell him to throw him out, he didn't hear it.
I didn't tell him to throw him out, I gave him his warning.
No, Kathy told you to give him a warning, because you do what Kathy tells you to do. It's how it looks from here, it's how it looks, and 99% of things is perception, and your perception ain't good right now, and it ain't gonna be good in 11 months, I don't care how much you pay Vision Media or how many favors they do.
Janine Hendricks-Potenza, 41 Fairmount Avenue, Unit 8. I'm gonna bring up two points that are very important to me. One, I am a teacher, and my husband is a fellow Teamsters Union member. He has to fight like these men do, and it is, it upsets me that these men have to go through this, okay? Now, let me bring up why I don't think privatization is good. First, I am a former resident of Teaneck. We all know that Teaneck has privatization of sanitation. It was a nightmare. In order to put out, like we have, we have rubbish in Hackensack, as we all know, twice a month. In Teaneck, you're not allowed to do that, you're only allowed to do that twice a year. And, get this, everyone, you have to pay, pay up to $200 to $300, and your apron must be completely full, otherwise, you can't, they don't even come to pick it up. Now, if you looked at the snow removal in Teaneck, it is not nearly what our city is, okay? There are potholes, there are, it's disgraceful. Now also, it is not going to save you money like you think it's going to save you money. It's not. Maybe it'll save you money because somebody's gonna give you a good little contract, and then it'll go up again, okay? Now, also, in addition, we can't write off our garbage anymore like we have been, because it's not a part of our taxes, okay? Because taxes will not, we will not be included in our taxes anymore, so we can't use it as a tax write-off. Right? Am I correct?
You're not, go ahead, finish your five, we'll explain it, yeah.
Okay, please do. In addition, it's not a good idea because the cost, do you know, did you estimate what the cost would be for us as a taxpayer? Okay, because I'll explain it to you, that I live in a condominium, and that my maintenance fee will probably go through the roof now if you're gonna privatize, and that you will force people that live in a condominium to then leave our wonderful city. I chose to stay here, I chose to stay close to my parents that are senior citizens, I chose to live in this city because I think it's a wonderful city that is diverse, and I wanna raise my children here when I have them. And in addition to, not only did you know that our wonderful sanitation department, even when this, if the, if the street is blocked, they come back and pick up the cans. I tell you, from being a former Teaneck resident, that's not gonna happen, if it's privatized, you're gonna have to go and get the can yourself, and then there's gonna be accidents. And in addition to snow removal being phenomenal, and also, do we know that the day before Thanksgiving, instead of our men being with their family preparing for dinner, they are out doing leaves? Because that's what they're supposed to do, because that's their job. Now I think, in addition to just a little bit of money, I'd rather my taxes go up just a smidge, or whatever it needs to go up, to make sure that these men have jobs.
Jim, did you wanna respond to that? Only because there's a little misconception there, we want, we want him to explain one thing.
See, what you're describing in Teaneck, okay, is a different type of privatization,
Folks, this, this is very important, if you hear this, please, thank you, we're trying, we're trying to give you some information here, all right? Teaneck is nothing like what we're talking about.
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to provide, you know, accurate information. What Teaneck has is a privatization between homeowners and the private company. The municipality of Teaneck has nothing to do with it, okay? So in other words, a homeowner in Teaneck contracts with a, with a solid waste collector and pays them. The municipality of Teaneck has nothing to do with it, so that's why you can't write that off on your taxes, because you're paying it. In Hackensack, in privatization, what we're talking about is a public-private mixture where the public entity of Hackensack hires a private contractor.
Are you going, but you're still talking about consolidating all their jobs, correct?
No.
Are you talking about-
What we said earlier was that-
No, 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 I'm completely in order, I'm just asking a question.
We will answer that in the public comment part.
Okay, when you privatize, you're getting rid of the jobs.
Bottom line is-
Ma'am, I just want him to answer the misconception that Teaneck and Hackensack privatization-
Okay, so you're gonna, even though, I'm trying to understand you, okay? Even though it's privatized, we're still gonna be paying for it, is that what you're-
No, that's wrong. No, it's already built into your taxes.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking, we're still going to be paying for it as taxpayers.
You're paying for it now, you'd still be paying.
We're paying for it.
You're paying for it now.
I, I, and I love paying for it, and I love giving, no, and I'm being honest, I think that our sanitation workers have done a fabulous job all these years.
Has she passed her five minutes?
No.
I just didn't know, I didn't, I got people behind you waiting.
I understand that, I understand that, and I will give them their time, I, I'm entitled to one more minute of time, I think.
Yes, you are.
I've been timing myself. I'm, all I'm saying is, in addition to you thinking that this is a great thing, think about all of these people that are gonna be on the unemployment line. That's all I'm saying, because you wouldn't want it if your, if your son or your daughter- Because you wouldn't want it if your, if your son or your daughter all of a sudden came home and said, "I have no job." Because this is stuff that we as a family...
The buzzer went off, your time is up, thank you.
Okay, one more sentence, sir. We as a family, my, my husband, we have to fight for this every day because he is a county employee with the Teamsters. And we have to fight for this constantly too. So just take, take in that consideration that you're taking food out of people's mouths. Thank you.
Guys, look like you're getting beat up pretty hard up here, right?
It's all right.
Feel good?
No, it doesn't feel good, but we...
Good, because when you go home sleepless tonight, think about all these poor guys that while you're in bed sleeping or busting their butt out there picking up your garbage and everything else. I used to work for a private contractor. Your whole scheme here, it's gonna save money, everything. When you said when a private contractor takes over, they'll be, have the opportunity to go with them, yeah, for about three months, then once they learn their routes, know everything, they're gone, okay? So I'm speaking for these guys from the private sector, okay? You guys, you said you want to help the city out tremendously, give back your raises. There goes some money that could help everybody. They don't have the ability to milk themselves raises. If you guys truly care, want to get the heat off and look good in newspapers, give something back. Give something back to the people. And with all your little hit list over here asking everybody's names, I'm sure you're gonna be rattling the cages, everybody that's up here speaking, okay? Because you're city government.
That's by law. We have to, for public reasons.
Yeah, but you know what? There's gonna be restitution for the people up here speaking.
Absolutely not.
Oh, you'll say it. You'll say it.
Never has been, never will.
Okay, remember, everybody's familiar with the game Monopoly here, okay? You got community chance.
I resent the fact that you think we're retaliating against anybody who comes to that point.
I've spoken to other people that come up here, issues between the libraries, EMTs, everything. You can't keep pulling the wool over everybody's eyes.
Not pulling the wool over everybody's eyes.
Like Monopoly, you got community chance and everything like that. Eventually, when you roll the dice, you're gonna get popped, then you're gonna have to put some time in jail here. By screwing these guys over and everything, that's playing the game Monopoly. The whole privatization is just garbage. Excuse us, ma'am, that's the easiest way. It's so easy for you guys to sit on the other side of the coin and look down at everybody like a couple people said earlier. When you go home, you know your job's secure. These guys are gonna come out here tomorrow morning on the curb, and they're gonna be distracted, they're gonna be worried about that job and everything. That means they can't do their job fully. Now, they're gonna be distracted. When you're out in the street, because obviously you guys never worked off this truck or anything like that, stepping up and down off the curb, up and down the truck and everything, the risk of getting hurt are tremendous. But now with them not concentrating, because you got, you guys breathing down their neck, accidents might happen. Not that everybody's gonna do it intentionally, but you guys don't think about the overall picture. It's so easy to make pie charts and graphs for you guys to say, "This is the best." Well, you know what? So can they. So everybody can make pie charts and graphs that make their cause look the best. You care about the city, do what's best. Actually start thinking and listening to the people. You have these orientations and everything like that? Actually listen. Sit down and read what they say and investigate the things. Then maybe you might look better in public. Because obviously, being a politician is all about public image. These guys don't have that. Their public image is that they're busting their butt back every single day. You agree?
I don't disagree with that at all, no.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I agree with you, they, they work hard, that's...
So why are you trying to get rid of them then?
We'll answer that, please, at the public section. I'm not blowing you off during the public session.
Like everyone was saying, you guys open yourself up to bids. You already knew what you were doing. You tried to sneak one under the table here, okay? Like I said, I would love for you guys to take your suits and ties and dresses off just for one day. Tag along with them on their routes. See what the hell they go through, okay? Like I said, I've been on the private side, I've seen what happens when companies who used to work for take over places, they get screwed. But yeah, you guys don't like getting hammered up here, neither do they. Another thing, you keep saying you care about the town. Raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes. If you guys don't have your glasses on driving around town, I don't know what you're looking at. Every street you go up, there's multiple houses for sale. There goes less tax revenue to put in everybody's pockets. You keep asking for more, people are gonna leave. So what are you gonna do then? Main street's gonna look like the old Wild West, you're gonna have tumbleweeds going down it. And then you'll be sitting there, right there next to the parking lot, like, this is another one. Nope, that was us. That was us, we destroyed the city. Just remember, when you go to sleep tomorrow, tonight, if you're in, if your section is lucky enough to have garbage tomorrow morning, I hope they wail on the air horn. I hope they start slamming the... Because I lived next to a school, when that front end loader comes and picks up that garbage can, yeah, it wakes me up. I don't complain about it. Because those guys are out there working hard while you guys are sleeping.
We cannot hear this gentleman speak, please.
You said, "You may be inconvenienced if they wake you up." Well, my pop-up timer's done. I'm cut off people, sorry, I can't help you at all.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I live at 33 Essex Street. And with all due respect, you won't see that flag hanging there. And I have a lot of respect for this country, I love this country. But it won't fly that flag because it's captured. It's the people who run the government in the United States, whether it's local, county, they don't understand that these are the leaders, the people of any, any county, any city are supposed to be the leaders. And the leaders are supposed to listen to what the people have to say. I think we have a good example of what everyone has put forth is pretty much the truth. I mean, I could tell, they're right. It just rings a bell. You don't want to throw, we don't want to throw our people under somebody's garbage truck, whether it's fire, police, sanitation workers. You know, I pay a lot of taxes, it's hard for me to make the ends of me, but I'll pay the extra tax. But I'm only gonna ask, reconsider what you, what you put out. This, this Masonic temple, right? It would have been a great cafe, it would have brought in revenue, walk-in revenue, could have been rented out to multiple, could have been a Starbucks, a cafe, a coffee house, this geodesic dome over the side, we don't need that. Maybe you could salvage that, recall that back. But whatever you do, I think you should really bring back a representative government that used to be here a long time ago. You know, before the British were here, there was a representative government here, okay? That was the real America, that's where they got the idea. These are the people that should be leading the city of Hackensack. And you should really listen to what they have to say, sit down with them, open some more meetings, don't just restrict it. Like they said, bring it to the auditorium at the school. Let people participate in government instead of making the decisions for them. And maybe I will fly that flag someday. I haven't saluted that flag since fourth grade. And I haven't, and I won't until you do something. That's all I got to say, listen to the people. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Richard Muller, 70 Lewis Street, Hackensack, New Jersey, shop steward, Teaneck Public Workers Association. I'm ashamed. I don't understand this fuzzy math. How could we go out and contract out to do other towns and be cheaper than a contractor in those other towns? Then turn around and say, "You know what? We're gonna get bids to see if we can contract out these people's jobs." These people stepped up, made revenue for the city, doing other collections in other towns. And this is how we pay them back? I'm ashamed. Leo, I'm ashamed that I even voted for you and listened to you that day. This is ridiculous. I voted for all of you people on Leo's recommendation. I'll tell you something right now, you will not get my vote again. Now, Mayor LeBrosse, Mrs. Canestrino, why did you change your affiliation to the Democratic Party in Burton County? Does it have to do with political kickbacks that you might receive for privatizing collection? And can I give you a list of the five contractors that contract out for collections that kick back to the Burton County Democratic Organization? This is smelling a little fishy here. And if I can prove it, I will, and I will look, trust me. The other question is, who are these people picking up my trash if they go private? Are you gonna have background checks on these people? Or are they gonna be robbing my house while I'm at work? I want to know this fact too. Because most of these contractors do not have background checks, and a lot of these people have criminal backgrounds. Because these are the jobs that they can get. Swinging on the back of a garbage truck. Our own municipal workers are paid a fair living wage as prevailing wage law. I hope we are going to honor the prevailing wage law under the Davis Bacon Act and make sure that our contractors also honor that law by providing the proper paperwork and receiving the proper paperwork from them. Because I will be checking. Do you hear me, Mr. Tros? I will check. That's Tros. And I also understand that you used to be in Sparta. Why did you leave there? Welcome to the big city. Things are a lot rougher here. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is William Fullmore. Live at 230 Anderson Street. I am the chief shop steward down at Department of Public Works in Inglewood. We have heard what was going on here at Hackensack. And we just want to let the Hackensack DPW sanitation workers know that we are here for you. We understand that if it's y'all today, it's gonna be us tomorrow. So we're standing here on behalf, in support of what's going, what's happening to the sanitation workers. And just like what all the shop steward that came up had said, we have been through this before and we fought tooth and nail to keep our jobs. For some reason, sanitation is always the focus in everyone's town. It's always the least of these that are the ones that are attacked. And I just want to let, and because of the type of job that we do, it's not respected. Sanitation workers are the hardest workers in the city of any municipality that's working. We're up in an extreme heat, when it's 105 degrees, we're picking up the garbage. When it's five degrees outside, where everyone is in their office, we're in their building, we're outside picking up the garbage. We don't, we work 365 days out the year, cold, we get the job done. You know, and the thing is, the thing is, is that because the job is not respected, because it's not political, it's easy to try to get rid of. We're not cops, our uniforms are not pressed, we dirty, we go home stink, we smell like garbage, but our jobs are necessary. Because let, let one week of garbage not get picked up and you're gonna have an epidemic out there. Diseases, you're gonna have flies, it's gonna be bad. To understand that as sanitation workers, the, um, we understand that children are not gonna come to our department, they're not, and, and the schools are not gonna come to our department and say, "This is what you want to be when you grow up." They'll go to the police stations to be a cop and that's good. They'll go to the fireman and that good. They won't come to DPW and say, "This is what you want to be when you grow up." And that's the respect that we do not have. I was ashamed growing up. My father was a DPW worker. I got picked on in elementary school, "Your father is a garbage man." That was what I was picked on doing. I got picked at that. But guess what? I had a roof over my head, I had clothes on my back, I had shoes on my feet. My father served 25, 30 years down at DPW where I now work at. He's in a ripe, he's, yeah, 70 years old, but guess what? He has his pension. He's taken care of, he got his insurance. And this is what these guys need here. We soon will age and we're still gonna get old, we have to keep our pensions. But to understand that the job that we doing is necessary. Insurance is necessary. Our jobs are necessary. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Muller. My address is 55 Davis Avenue, the corner of Davis and Lewis, L-O-U-I-S. I come to you by way of Jersey City and Bogota. So I know a little bit about politics and negotiating. And I've not been in Hackensack as long as some of you folks have been, I've only been here 16 years. That's kind of like a drop in the bucket as compared to some of these people with their vested interests in this city. When I came, I was very disillusioned about politics. But I was so proud to vote for the current council. Because I believe you're honorable people. And so at 70 plus, I didn't mind campaigning. It was a pleasure. I was honored to do it for you. So when I saw this in my mailbox, I, I had to wonder, why? What needs fixing? Of all the things that I've seen going on in Hackensack, why, why did this have to be fixed? You don't fix what's not broken. I'm not accustomed to coming to the council meetings, I'm embarrassed that I don't come to any. But when I thought that the jobs of these young men who treat me like their grandmother, I, I just have to speak up for them. They make me feel safe. They give me security. Not just in taking out my trash, which they do with such honor. The gentleman before me so humbly spoke about their responsibilities. The young men who come to pick up my trash are honorable, ethical. I love them. I don't want to see them lose their jobs because they're doing such a fine job. I am so happy to be served by them. I appreciate them. I don't know everything that's involved with the negotiating. But I'm hoping that the level of honor that I believe my representatives have in Hackensack don't have to rise to the occasion because they're already there, okay? So thank you for this opportunity. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
My name is George Wacocha. I'm a resident of 395 DeWolf Place in Hackensack. Not much of a public speaker, but um, once I heard of what your actions were gonna be with our fellow sanitation department workers, I was appalled. I took off from work tonight to make sure I was here to support these guys. I know a lot of these guys, I've gone to school with them, I've grown up with them. And, I mean, I just don't know how this council and mayor, how you guys can look at yourself in the mirror and trying to take these guys' jobs. It's just, it's remarkable. I mean, there are other options you guys could, you know, consider rather than taking these guys' livelihood. I mean, there's so many people, you know, kids, wives, family behind these guys, and these 32 or 40 jobs that you're trying to eliminate, it's just ridiculous. I mean, how can you guys sleep at night thinking about this proposal? It makes, it makes no sense. And I have a personal story for you. Mr. LeBrosse, my, my kids were in your, your wife's class when the Ziza administration was in, was in power. And every single day, I heard disparaging comments about the Ziza administration and how hopefully one day when you get in there, you're gonna change things. This is not the kind of change that we're looking for. This is definitely not the kind of change we're looking for. I mean, it's sad, it's appalling that for the last three, four hours, you've just heard, you've had endless people waiting outside, coming here trying to speak to you, you've had your head down, dismissive the whole time. We have, Mr. Tros, I guess that's your name? We have, we have residents, we live here. We've all lived here, I've been here since 1987. I don't know where you came from. I don't know where you came from. I mean, you're trying to destroy the fabric that makes up this community of Hackensack. I mean, we all know each other, we love each other, and you want to privatize these jobs to who, God knows who. I mean, where is the idea coming from? Who's lobbying for this? Who's pushing for this? Because I love my sanitation department. And these guys, they support this community. All the money they earn comes right back into this community. I know, because one time I had a business and these guys, one truck would show up and three more trucks would show up, but all these guys come to support. They supported these businesses. The money comes back into this town. I think you guys, for us to still be having this conversation, this proposal should be dead on arrival. Dead on arrival. And you need to go back to your organization, whatever it is, I don't think the residents of Hackensack want this move. And I hope you guys are listening loud and clear. Because this is a direct referendum on your reelection. I don't think we'll be seeing these same faces here if you guys make this move. I can guarantee you that. This whole community, from law enforcement, sanitation, you know, park recreation, no one is in accord with this move here. So I think you guys need to really rethink this and this needs to be dead on arrival again. Because it's not worth these guys' livelihood. It's not worth their livelihood. That's it.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the great city of Hackensack, my name's Alex Marte. 143 Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. Probably knew that. About to come off the cuff. I'm an entrepreneur, businessman, and investor. One thing I've noticed about life and in business, when you see opportunity, you have to seize it. There's a lot of potential in this community. I lived here for half my life. I'm originally from Queens, New York. When 9/11 happened, my mom got scared, so she moved to Hackensack. I seized the opportunity and tried to do the... Done everything I can and will do to be the part of the person I want to be. I don't have any formal college experience, I'm an alumni of Hackensack High School, class of '07. I chose a blue collar job. I love cars, I went to Lincoln Tech. I tried to enlist the Marine Corps. Unfortunately, I was medically discharged. So God has different plans. So I decided to use the morals and the values of the Marine Corps to structure my life. I've been very fortunate to meet lots of people and I see lots of potential in the city. I believe the great people here are the reasons why we're so great. Why we're so competitive. Our schools, our hospitals, our everything is, there's so much potential. So they're... They need to privatize, makes no sense. Your tax money going other towns, other cities. And then you'll just be a burden because there's 32 men losing their jobs. Costing the state and the county taxpayer money. So it makes no sense why you're trying to justify privatizing when you're just adding to the problem. I just want to see the city do great things. I want to be like Joseph Sensar and have my name on a hospital. I'm building. There's so much things the city can do. I'm very ambitious. I'm 26 years old or young, and I'm Dominican. Off the bat, I'm minus a disadvantage. So I feel like it is Hackensack that gave me that. The people, the environment, the city, the feeling of Hackensack. I'm a member of the Team Hackensack Community Outreach Program. I also attend Summit Church on Spring Valley. I'm a member of the youth ministry. I believe there's so many things we could do for the city. And this isn't one of them. I wish I was a little more organized, but I'm just spitballing here. I'm a little parched. Is everyone there? I just want to see the city do great things. This isn't the right decision. As you can see, there is, the people around you, they care. So we just have to have that feeling of community, that caring, that passion that makes Hackensack great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, young man.
Thanks for the support.
Jason Soome, 151 Prospect Avenue.
Jason?
First, I would like to thank you for serving our community. I know it's tough sitting up there and I understand tonight's been pretty tough as well. You know, and nobody's going to sit here and disagree with your short-term cost savings. I'm sure you've done your analysis, I'm sure you know who you're talking about. But in the long term, the taxpayers of this city, taxpayers of this city are going to pay more. There's nobody that can sit there and say, "We know in five years what that next contract's going to be." Once we sell off our trucks, once we lose our hardworking employees that work for the city of Hackensack, you're not going to tell me that all of their work, their hard work is worth a couple dollars now and a future that we don't know what the cost is going to be. These privatized companies are going to come into our community and they're going to deceive us by initially presenting a lower cost, followed by a waiting period where we sell off all our trucks and equipment and we lose these people. At this time, both TNEC and Newark are hearing complaints from their residents. Newark is even looking to add additional part-time employees when they have privatized. They're trying to reverse the trend. As a side note, we're going to be destroying an institution that has worked hard and been a backbone of this city from years past. Mr. Tros, I have just one quick question for you. The people that, you know, I've heard that they're going to be bumped to other departments and that's part of the plan. When they are bumped, what happens to the employees that are in those positions?
I think a gentleman talked about civil service and I would agree with him. I think it was Mark. Neither he or I can guess what civil service is going to do. It's a wild card. So first of all, if there is a layoff, the positions would be sent down to civil service and they would determine what position could be bumped and who would be bumped based on seniority.
So would I be right to...
And that's if we lay off anybody.
Would I be right to assume though, if somebody's going to be laid off, now, we don't just know it's coming from the sanitation department, it could be any of the departments that work for the city?
No, it would have to be a similar title and that would be determined by civil service. Whether it's a laborer, it'd have to be a similar or akin to. And it's, I'm not going to say it's a, I don't know what they'll do.
I just, I'd like to leave you with this. You know, I understand that it's a tough job looking at the budget, but I think these people's jobs are worth saving. And, you know, I'd like to again, thank you for your service and respectfully ask that after this meeting is over, this current meeting is adjourned, you guys discuss it and you listen to the employees that are here, you listen to the taxpayers and the residents, and you stop this privatization process.
Kasim Gaines, DeWolf Place, homeowner, Team Hackensack. I'm here today to address the proposal of the sanitation department. The sanitation department is one of those rare services that every resident of Hackensack benefits from. Everyone may not go to the library or walk through a park, but everyone has garbage and recycling that needs to be picked up. And it makes it of the utmost importance that any changes made are heavily considered. There are several things about the city that need fixing, but sanitation is not one of them. This is a high-functioning, relatively low-cost service provided to all Hackensack residents, which barely makes a dent in our overall municipal budget. And in exchange for the small price we pay in taxes, we get consistent pickups with special care and attention paid to our sick and shut-in neighbors who may forget or be unable to move the receptacle from the driveway to the curb. They assist with leaf pickup in the fall, they assist with snow in the winter. Our workers are dedicated and work hard, not just because they are good people, but also because they're invested in this town. Hackensack isn't a job for them, it's a home. It's in their DNA. They don't work hard to get a bonus, they do it because they don't want their city overflowing with trash. This is the worst thing we can propose, not only to our taxpayers, but to these workers who are our own. The highest-paid sanitation worker in our town makes about $40,000, which is a small price to pay for the quality of service they deliver to all of us. And in case it hasn't already been made clear, these workers are scared. I have spoken to workers with sick spouses and children who rely on their health benefits. These are people who live paycheck to paycheck, some of whom have only taken one or two sick days in all the years that they've worked. We've all been worried about a decrease in service in exchange for more money and our neighbors losing their jobs. And I know that that feeling, that fear of losing your job is something that the mayor and deputy mayor can sympathize with. They are clearly worried about losing their jobs because while online petitions were being circulated around about sanitation, they asked the city's public relations firm, not on our dime, thank you, to send out a press release to distance Mr. LeBrosse and Ms. Canastrino from Donald Trump. Now let me be clear, there are lots of us in this room that would like some distance from Donald Trump. But we don't all invite a news crew into our homes to do it. I don't think doing that solves the city's problems. That was patently about both of you, not the residents of this city. We don't care what your political affiliation is, and we don't need you to tell news crews how much you care about Hackensack's diversity. We care about your actions. Because this is what I've seen since you've taken office. I've watched Earl Warden stand here time and again, after he was fired on your watch, asking for his job back, and ultimately he moved out of town because he was so dissatisfied with this council. I've seen many of your supporters in the black community who you relied on to win your election, stand up in this room and say that you have betrayed our trust. I've watched the rush to score points by prematurely naming Officer James Price Captain and then the rush to criticize Ms. Keeling Geddes, who said that the move was ill-timed and misguided. I watched Councilman Dave Sims passed over for deputy mayor and given a figurehead title of commissioner, which was the council's first foray into creative job titles within the police department. And now I'm watching as the council is proposing privatizing sanitation, the department in the city with the highest number of minority workers and city residents. And I'm not accusing anyone of being bad people, but like all of us, sometimes you make bad decisions. It's a shame though, that so many of your decisions have negatively impacted Hackensack residents, especially members of the black and brown communities. And I want to address one more thing. The citizens of Hackensack are smart. Enough to know how this game works and that this plan won't save them a dime. Sanitation companies offer municipalities low rates in the beginning, and then once they have residents by the throats, they dig deeper into their pockets. When rates start climbing, what are we supposed to do once the town has sold off garbage trucks and laid off workers? This is exactly what people hate. Higher prices for worse service. It's the exact opposite of what you were elected to do. Just last week, it was reported that the residents of Nutley hadn't received garbage or recycling pickups since before Memorial Day. Due to problems with their private companies, the smell of hot garbage lingered throughout the town and the council threw their hands in the air and they said, "Don't look at us." But right now, you have a room full of people looking at you, saying that they want for you to trash this deal. We ask you to consider it. Thank you very much.
Joanna Calle, DeWolf Place. I think what really comes, what it really comes down to is that the people of Hackensack deserve transparency. Workers have been harassed for well over a year. This conversation of privatization has been around for more than that. We know some members of the council have been talking about this for a while. And somehow, now it's being put forth as if it's a brand-new idea that you're considering just now. These workers who have been protecting themselves against harassment have sued. And this certainly starts sounding like retaliation for their ability to sue you for treating them badly. That's what this looks like. It doesn't look like this is supposed to save us any dollars. It really, what it looks like is that you're harassing workers, not caring about their rights, not caring about their livelihoods, and certainly not caring about what you are and not allowed to do. That's why you're being sued. So it's really important for us to be aware of the fact that these workers have rights, they deserve to be represented, they deserve to be heard. And when you overstep that, that's when you get sued. You already have started going in that direction. And when privatization happens, that's when worker rights are trampled. We've seen it happen in other cities. That's what, your wife is a teacher, and we fight that kind of thing all the time. And we know that privatization does that. Get rid of the unions and worker rights get trampled. So you're either with workers' rights or you're not. Very simple. Thank you.
My name is Ken Russell from Paula Fly Road. I work for the county of Bergen, I'm a motor vehicle operator, I'm also the president of Local 655, which represents about 330 people, blue collar. First, I'd like to, I'd like to say that briefly, I'm asking you please work in good faith with the law enforcement. It seems to me like you're forcing them to file a grievance and then everything gets ugly. But most of all, the reason I'm here is, I don't know any of these gentlemen that work sanitation, so I'm not here because I know somebody here, but I'm here because I know what they do. I'll be 63 in two weeks and I worked sanitation. I actually worked for the city of Hackensack back in 1979 and I've been on both sides. I know what it's like to work for a municipality and I know what it's like to work for a private contractor. And believe me, these gentlemen are not getting rich and I see what happens with the private contractors. You know, I'm going to reiterate what's been said, the department I worked for in the county, I had the honor back in 1979 of competing in national competition. And I met a young lady from Ohio who was telling me a story, the department that she worked for in her county in Ohio, which is similar to what I do here in Bergen County. The local people decided to privatize the department. And it all looked good because what they put in the paper was everything it was costing them, the vehicles, the fuel, the salaries and all that sort of stuff. So what happened was they looked good because they put the bids out and a bunch of guys came in with two-year, three-year contracts. And basically, they knew what they would do and they would take a hit for the first two, three years. And then when that was up, they had the county hostage. And that's what's going to happen here. Now, what I don't understand is, I'm not sure, as far as I know is, you know, I think the problem I see a lot usually when councils make decisions is I don't think they look far enough down the road. I don't, you know, if you owned this business, if you owned this department, you might look at things a lot different, you know? A lot of times, people are on a council for a few years, they walk away, they don't look back, and they don't look at the damage that was created. And you know, these people here today are speaking, but you know, I learned people also speak at the polling, at the toll, at the voting booth. And you know, I know what it's like to be out there and work. And I'll tell you, I know firsthand these contractors that come in, I know who's making the money and who's not making the money. These guys that work for private contractors, if they're making, if they're making what they should be making, at some point, you're going to be a hostage. Once the trucks are gone and these gentlemen are gone. And if they're not making what they should be making, management's making the money and the service goes down. I saw that firsthand with private contractors. And you know, another thing is, I've seen this happen, like's been said, is, you know, these gentlemen, you know, I work for the government, I know that you can't go on strike. There are probably times that you wish you could, but you don't. And you come in despite what's going on, what's circling around, and you do your job. And you try to settle your problems, but still doing your job. Private contractors won't do that. We don't want... We don't want to forget what happened in New York City years ago. They're going to let it pile up, and they're going to have the last laugh when you start throwing money at them to get this fixed. All I ask is to look down the road, and really, I urge you, please, don't privatize. These gentlemen are, are an asset to this city, and I commend them for what they do. And I really think you need to look at the big picture and look down the road. Something might look good for the time being, but down the road, it's going to come back to haunt this city. Thank you for your time.
Grant Stewart, Third Street, Hackensack. I recall being here about fifteen years ago, and then again approximately thirty years ago, when the same discussion came up. It failed because of the turnout and the support that we had for our sanitation workers and the department that employs a majority of people of color. I know at the last meeting, you talked about discussing privatization. It was no decision made. But you put a number to how much you were going to save, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you haven't looked into it, how do you have a number?
I would ask, I would, I would have-
Let me finish, because you're going to take my five minutes.
Go ahead.
I've spoken to some of these men during the week. Some of them I've grown up with, some are relatives. Some are concerned, most of them are concerned about their jobs. But I just want to make one last comment. When you go, go home at night, remember, based on your decision, after privatization, these men may not have a home to go to.
Carolyn Davis, Stanley Place in Hackensack. First of all, I want to ask a question. Is a copy of the results of the testing on the soil at Carver Park available to the public?
Of course.
Okay. Because that's an issue I had brought up many times before, so I would like to get a copy of that. I also want to say congratulations to Jeanette Lane on her nephew Austin's being named president of the college. Alan and I, her brother, graduated from high school together, and that is a great honor. I'm proud of that family. I have been a citizen of Hackensack for almost sixty-eight years. Mr. Mangan, you said that the state says in order to privatize that you have to bid. But the state didn't say that you had to privatize. That's your decision as a council. I come to many of the city council meetings. I've heard all about. And, and I want to thank the city council for, you have done some great things, but this is not a great thing. I have come to hear about all the renovations of Hackensack, the rebuilding of Main Street, the dome, the Eminem Building, all of those to a tune of millions of dollars. But yet, we have one of the departments that's paid the least, and that's the first place we want to cut. If we're going to cut somewhere, I think maybe we need to scale back on some of those programs. I also read where there's grants, there's fundraising. And why couldn't that have been done for our, we need a new truck? Have a fundraiser. Get a grant. There had to be another option than taking food out of the mouths of our workers, who work very hard. The, the repairs that weren't done, it's not their problem. They're workers. That was the council's problem. Trucks that need to be bought, that's not their problem. They're workers. That's the council's problem. Contracts not signed, that's not their problem. But it looks like they're the ones that are being punished, and they don't make any decisions. There is money that can be found. I know there is. With all the talk and revitalization, we have all these companies coming in that are building apartments, that are going to make money. We need to talk to some of them and tell them, "We can make mandates." You want to come into our city? You want to buy property in our city? You know what? Our city also needs some new garbage trucks. If they can build all these magnificent buildings, I think they can donate a garbage truck to save our, our workers their jobs. And the last thing I have to say is, because everything is a repeat of what everybody else has said, it's the voice of the people. Mayor LeBrosse and city council, I think the people have spoken, and the verdict is in. This is not a good deal.
Toma Tomoshegi of Emerald Street of Hackensack, New Jersey. To give you a little bit of background, I used to work for a construction consulting firm that did governmental bids. You always lowball your bids, always lowball your bids. And then, once you get in there, that's when your change orders come in, and that's when everything starts going up. It's just the way the game is played. I, I used to help the principal of my office write the bids. And we would cut a corner here, and we would cut a corner there. And then, once that change order comes in, oh, well, you know, the cost went up on this, materials went up on that, the repair to fix this went up, parts, it's just inflation. That's how it works. So the, the price that they're going to give you is always going to be up the lowball. So saving us, what, eighty-five dollars per taxpayer? Keep it. They, they can have it and keep their jobs. Touching on the law enforcement, on freezing their salaries, that's kind of BS. Like, with the building and expansion that's going on in this town, who's going to be protecting us? And they're doing it on, what, four hundred dollars a week? I mean, I can only speak to one person that I know sitting up there. Your wife was a teacher. You, you, you guys started on humbler beginnings. Like, you know what it's like to live, you know, hand-to-mouth from paycheck to paycheck, raising two kids?
Mm-hmm.
You know? Think about what these guys are doing. And, 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 and that was back then, when things were more affordable. You know, four hundred dollars a week before taxes are taken out? You can't, you can't even pay rent with that, let alone student loans, like he said. Electricity, cable, car payment. I'm a single parent. I make less than that. And I'm, I, I had to move home because I couldn't do it. So, and, and these are the people that protect us. So, I mean, come on, give them what they deserve. So, that's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Ms., can we say your name?
Hello, hello.
Toma Tomoshegi, T-O-M-O-S-H-E-G-I.
Once I thought it was her, okay.
Good afternoon and good evening, council. F.J. Williams, representing Metro Holdings, New York City. Uh, Mr., uh, I forgot your name. It's some time ago. I asked you what the city financially stayed. You said they were. Now, I don't understand. You got these guys here that, I didn't know the police makes such small amount of money. And I see when they be putting their jobs in line, as well so as the sanitation department. I have my differences with them, but they do a good job. And at the same time here, I see Mr. Mayor, I ask him about things. He can't help it. I talk to Ms. Canastrino, can't help it. I see you're building a dome, seven million dollars. You got Atlantic Street over here, where it's going to be a two-lane street. You put parking meters there. Sometime, you go and have a thing. So why would you want to put them where you want to save money? I can't understand that. Maybe you can explain it to me. You said when you collected taxes the last time, you was over, you was up to date with your taxes. Because after the tenth, you can't pay with a check anymore. You got to pay a certified check or cash. So where's the money going? And I told you, Mr. Tros, we were speaking some time ago. You remember what happened upstate New York, where they built their stadium? And the two people was indicted for it? And I said to you, you're trying to make Hackensack like New York. And just like New York, when I'm living in Harlem, when Mr. Clinton or whatever his name came into Harlem now, a black man can't stay in Harlem. All the white folks are flocking down to Harlem. I remember a time you couldn't even walk. A white person couldn't walk. Now, you walking around with shorts and with dogs and running and jogging. And I asked you, Mr. Mayor, you was talking about, um, the only thing you worry about is Prospect and Main Street. I asked you about senior citizens, affordable housing. You said, "We working this. We got a pilot program." I also asked you to tell the people what pilot means. Finally, you told them, "Payment in lieu of taxes." And people got building buildings here. They don't have to pay taxes for ten years. But yet, and still, you made a mistake. You projected the wrong thing, but you want to lay these guys off. I don't, I'll tell you, now, just a policeman. I don't know how the hell they making on eight hundred dollars every two weeks. And when you offered me a job when I first came here for fourteen thousand, I told them there, when they gave me a job, I would take a garbage truck in New York and sell it. And you rent, and you rent these garbage trucks now, what, six thousand dollars a month, a week, or what? How much do these garbage trucks you leasing out? How much do they cost?
Six thousand a month for the two.
Six thousand a month?
For the two.
Those are somebody else's. Those are hand-me-down. Why we buy, you know, why pay six thousand dollars for a used truck? Why can't we have newer stuff? Just stop spending the money. As I said to you one before, I don't want none of the power. I know you're going to give me none, but can I lick the plate? That's all. Think about these guys. I know how it's done. But you're not going to make Hackensack like New York. It's too fucked on. Many people's going to have their hands in their till. So keep these guys working. We have our little divin', we fight, I argue with them about my garbage. Then I run down the street pulling the thing behind me and make them take it. But keep these guys, really. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Harriet. Can you hear me?
It's not working right now.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay. Okay. My name is Harriet Taylor. I'm on Prospect Avenue. I'm fairly new here in Hackensack. But, you know, I listened to everyone in this room tonight. And I understand, you know, Hackensack is a very beautiful place to live. And my take on it, you know, I think that this is a, I brought my son over here in Hackensack because of the, the foundation that I seen. But when I look around tonight and I hear what's going on, it's totally a different, gives me a totally different idea. I mean, look at Hackensack, you know? Privatizing jobs does not help. Because what happens when you prioritize, you change the whole, yes, fabric of Hackensack. Unless you are trying to, um, change the fabric of Hackensack and not letting the people know and doing it in a way that they don't know, that's one of the ways you do it. But to me, Hackensack should, is a community for family. And why these young, young men, they have families, they go out to work, they have children. Their children look at them and want to do the same and do what they, they are an example for they, for the upcoming future. And I feel that, when I listen to the different speakers, the kind of, you know, salary that they getting, it's not right. I mean, from the police to the sanitation and to other workers as well. But as a beautiful town as Hackensack is, what they can do before, you know, council, the mayor, you make decision, I think you should bring it to the people. And like one of the speakers said, "We can do fundraisers. We can do things. We can enhance this beautiful Hackensack, this town, if we all come together." You know, when you took office, you made an oath and you said, that you, you made a vow and said that you're for the people. So if you're for the people, then you look out for the people. You know, you don't, you know, you'll find a way how to make things stay. Make sure that they have a job. Make sure that they get a raise. Our police officers need a raise, because I feel safe in Hackensack, and I have children. When they walk the street, I don't have to worry. I know my son goes to the academy. They know him. The sanitation men, they come, they say hi, you know, and I'm new, and I really like it. But if you, if you change things, then you, you know, you changing the whole, you're going through gentrification, and it's going to be different. You're not going to have that same spirit here. So I think that each and every one, you should go back and rethink this over before you, you know, prioritize anything. Give these guys, keep the jobs, and then make an improvement. If it's trucks that we need, and if we need more trucks instead of paying six thousand, it can cost a lot less because you could have mechanics that can fix these trucks, and the guys could still work. And in this way, you enhancing everybody lifestyle by, you know, doing those things and having banquets and, you know, let everybody come together. When I look around on, when I look around on Main Street, and I see all the stores that's going and where these outsiders coming in, and they just buying up, where's Hackensack is changing? These people can't, they don't want to move their businesses. But they have to go because they forced by the rent. So rethink what you, you know, you came in here for the people, to help the people rethink it when you go home tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Tony Jackson.
Indian resident. Tony, how are you?
Three fifty Perseig Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. Let me begin by saying I respect and honor all of you. And tonight, I'm glad I'm not sitting where you're sitting. I'm glad I'm on this side. But I'm standing to have you to do something that's very important, is to think. Working on my computer today. I could not get it to work properly. But the answer was to press the reset button. Once I pressed the reset button, everything was synchronized. So tonight, in light of what you have heard and what you're discussing, possibilities, you need to press the reset button and rethink. Think. April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight.
Memphis.
Memphis, Tennessee. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. died fighting for this cause. They killed a dreamer, but they couldn't kill the dream. And the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King is alive in this place tonight. Hurt me as a young person when I saw sanitation workers wearing signs that said, "I am a man." How sad that grown men had to wear a sign to remind people that they needed dignity, respect, and a job. King was right. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I believe in you. I trust you to hit the reset button, rethink, before you make the next move. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jaxi's Appler Avenue.
Good evening.
Mayor, members of the council, manager, rest of the staff. For 11 years, I've stayed silent. Served the city for 16 years as an elected official here. I had the great privilege of serving Judge Robinson in 1992. We addressed this very same issue. As a good counsel, you're looking for ways to economize and save money, pass that on to the taxpayers. But what we found, and I'm speaking from experience because we did quite a bit of research, we decided long before we went out to bid that it would not be the proper thing. One thing that tonight I'm appalled at is that it's come this far, that you're out to bid several weeks ago and the community hasn't had the opportunity to weigh in at all. And tonight, you tried to keep members of our community from being here and speaking. That's absolutely wrong. That's not what the government of Hackensack or any place in this country is all about. Discussion leads to good answers and good solutions. And you chose to limit the people that could come here to speak. It's terrible. For 11 years, I've watched councils do whatever they do because it's difficult. And sometimes it's, you're not sure what the right decision is and you weigh it out. Tonight's important. And I stood outside for quite some time, waiting to get in. My car doesn't work in the back anymore, I couldn't get in the back way. And what I heard outside while I was standing out there was that this is a done deal. So many people saying, "I don't even know why we're here." They don't listen. This is already done. It's out to bid, they've made the decision. They probably even know who they want to give it to. And you know what? I defended you. I said, "I hope not. I don't believe that." I believe that good government works because of discussion, because of conversation. It's a process. And I hope that you recognize, as you go down this path of investigating whether you want to privatize or not, that it doesn't work. Your best ambassadors on the street, your best ambassadors are your police department and your sanitation department because they come in contact with people every day. And you're losing some of your best ambassadors to a company, should they come in, of people that are strangers. That's not the way to do business. I encourage, I urge, that you take a step back. And as the good Reverend says, "Reset." And please, recognize that in the long run, as we determined, Judge Robinson and I in that investigation, that in the long run, after the first, has been said by many good speakers, after your first contract, after you have that first cycle, you can't go back and they have hold and you are in trouble. So please, please, prove to those people that were saying that this is a done deal, please prove to them it's not and that you've rethought and that you've hit the reset button. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Gilbert. Clinton plays Hackensack. I just want to reiterate, I agree with everybody and everything that was said here tonight. I support my sanitation workers 110%. I think it's a disgrace what we've done to the young police officers in this city. You have negotiated a contract with them. Abide by your negotiations. The courts have ruled. Go read the decisions before you get us into another lawsuit and raise our taxes higher. And Mr. LaBrosse, I just want to teach you a little bit of manners tonight. You looked up maybe at two or three people. I hope you have a two-hour rebut here tonight, answers to everybody. Because I, I was taught manners that you look at people when they speak to you. You couldn't possibly be writing. And you, you better have a good answer for everybody here tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
So the council is Carl Maggie, Hackensack, New Jersey.
Carl.
I apologize. Um, Carl Maggie, Hackensack, New Jersey. Um, I'm not up here to throw no more if you on fire. But I would like to exploit, because I've seen something tonight, um, that really, that's true to my heart, I appreciate. It's a support. As a city employee since 2006, I've never seen such an outcry from the city of Hackensack, from the citizens of Hackensack for sanitation. Um, I really feel like we're really getting supported. I appreciate that. I want to just take this platform to say that and not to really address so much with the council. But, um, I really want to, even though a lot of people's left, it's almost 12 o'clock at night. I know TV land watching, YouTube. I want everybody to know as a sanitation employee, as a resident, as a person, really appreciate all the support from everybody. I really do. It means a lot. As one man said, he chases down with a truck. That happens more than people would know that happened. But it's all love. We're all together and I appreciate we really come together for this time of need. All the other rhetoric, you know, time will do, we'll get to that. But I really want to say, I really do appreciate everybody on behalf of sanitation. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Also too, for all the sanitation guys out there, DBW guys out there, we got about a few hours, let's sleep. Let's get home, please. Get some work done.
Don't bring out all that rubbish now. You gotta pick that up.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Manager and City Council. My name is Anita Rivers. I live at 259 Railroad Place. And I first want to say that we should be, all be here to celebrate these men because they are gainfully employed, they are supporting their families, they are perhaps homeowners, they are renters, they are consumers in this community. And so rather than jeopardize their ability and their livelihood to be employed, to be homeowners, to support their families, I think we should be thinking about how we can support them and help them to grow in their capacities. Um, I, I, I really believe that all of you have heard the voice of the people tonight as one of the previous speakers mentioned. I really believe that you have. And I trust that you all will do the right thing. Privatizing the sanitation department is not the right thing to do. I have lived in this community for a number of decades, so has my family. And I'm very, very concerned. I have appreciated all that the sanitation department has done for me. Whenever I've called, they've come to help me. And I don't believe that I would be given the same service if, if the service was privatized. I really don't believe that I would be provided the same service. So I appreciate it that you will rethink this and that you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Reverend.
Madam Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Trousse. Good evening all. I'm here in support of the Reverend Gregory Jackson and in solidarity with Reverend Jackson as a member of the Fellowship of Black Churches. I too reside in Hackensack, New Jersey. I'm not going to belabor the night and I'm not going to wear your patience out by repeating what everyone has already said about privatization. But what I am going to do is ask you to remember. I'm going to ask you to remember two things. The first thing that I'm going to ask you to remember is history. And remember what happened back in the Roman Empire when Diocletian was emperor and the Roman Empire fell. I'm going to ask you to remember what happened to the basement of his palace when Rome fell. The basement of the palace was turned into a garbage dump. It was turned into a waste heap. A once beautiful, fabulous place where he lived that he was very proud of was turned into a garbage heap. The second thing that I'm going to ask you to remember is this. Two words, Bergen, Pines, good night.
Anybody else from the public before we close? Motion to close to the public? Oh, I'm sorry. How are you, sir?
Good evening, uh, good evening everyone. Lance Paul, 395 Golf Place. I just wanted to just make a couple of quick points. First thing is, the police officers, I don't know much about the contract situation, but based on what I heard and what they're making, I'm very surprised. Personally, from my standpoint, I'm very surprised. They, they deserve better. If that's the case, they deserve better. Okay? Secondly, it's, it's not a good thing to have conflicts with the police department and your sanitation, no matter where you are. They're two vital parts of the city, two vital agencies of any city. Whatever problem you have, you can't, you want to get to a table and, you know, make cool heads prevail and you want to just work out your differences in an amicable way. We need the police officers to be happy so they could do their jobs the right way. We need our sanitation workers also to be happy and not feel like, you know, they're gonna lose their jobs so they can't perform their jobs in an admirable way. My advice in these situations is that when you look at the turnout tonight and you see the community, there's strength in numbers. The will of the people is always very important if you look at things that way. You have to listen to the people. Sometimes you can agree to disagree. Transparency, democracy, accountability, it's all important keys when you run any organization. You can't have these people come out here and spend this much time and you just kick them to the curb and not listen to them. That's not the way you do business. You have to listen to the people. You don't have to agree with everything that you're saying tonight. But when you see this many people come out, you know it's very important to the city. Especially the people that live here in Hackensack off the council. You know these people, you see them every day. You talk to them constantly. It's very important for you to listen to them. Don't just kick them to the curb. And to these two gentlemen here, if you're not from Hackensack, you may not understand how the people feel tonight. It's very important for you to, just stop the wheels tonight, okay? Go back to the drawing board, think. If you want to privatize this, look at the pros and the cons. Look at the advantages and the disadvantages. You can't just go down that road and just think that's what's gonna work. I have property in Teaneck. I live here in Hackensack. And they privatized the garbage. It was a colossal failure. It was a nightmare. And I live in Teaneck. And then I moved here, I still have property. It was a bad decision. So what you should do is go look at studies from other towns who privatize their garbage and look at the pros and the cons before you actually make any decision. You don't want to make this decision now and then when you look back down the road, you realize that you could have done a better job of what you're doing. Stop. When you see things like this, don't press forward. Stop. Include the people, have an open forum. Ask them what they like, what they don't like. When you run a city, it's about the people, it's not about you. Ask them, have an open forum in an auditorium. Tell them to voice their concerns to you and make them write suggestions to you. And then you combine it and you come up with an amicable solution. I don't want privatization at all. I love these guys, they do an excellent job. I've never had an issue with them. And like I said, you're gonna bring new people. You know what you have, you don't know what you're getting. And a lot of times, the more you go out to change things, the more they remain the same. In this situation, you know what you need? I'm gonna tell you what you need. You need leadership. And that's why you're elected, is to lead. When it's time to vote, just don't vote with someone, just to vote. When you vote, think about the people that you represent. And leadership is very important. And, you know, there's a lot of people that can be elected, I'll be done in a minute. There's a lot of people that can be elected to positions, but it's not a lot of people that can lead. And that's what's important tonight. Just go back, take a deep breath and exhale and think, you know what? Maybe it's a bad decision. Let's look at everything and make the right decision for the people of Hackensack. And these sanitation workers, please, think about them. Think about their families, their livelihood and everything. And don't destroy them because you can destroy them permanently.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close. Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino? Aye. Councilmember Simms and Zatson? Councilmember Gillan Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Potaglia.
Well, yes, listen, what everybody had to say tonight and no decision has been made yet. And I want to look into, uh, will make the right decision. Thank you for coming.
Bringing property tax relief to the Hackensack taxpayers, keeping our taxes stable, even lowering our taxes, these are among our administration's top priorities. But certainly not our only top priority. When we were elected, one of the things we pledged to do was listen to our residents. And I'd like to hope that you see that we are listening to you here tonight. After doing a thorough overhaul and review of our sanitation trucks, we were faced with making a decision of purchasing six new trucks at a cost of approximately $2 million. We're not saying that we don't have a plan to do that. I think Jim presented that. Part of his presentation showed a nine-year plan where the city could afford to purchase these trucks. But before we make any decisions of this magnitude, before we spend, expend any of this type of money throughout the city, it's our fiscal responsibility to gather information, to find out what all our other options are and make the best decisions for our city. And believe me, that is all that is happening at this point. No decisions have been made. Unfortunately, in this process, the only way we can gather this type of information is to have companies submit a proposal and show us, here's what, here's the way they do business. Here's what their costs are. Something that we can certainly take a look at and decide if any money can be saved. We don't know that until we look at that information and we see that information. By no means is money the only reason or the only consideration that we have in making this decision. Two other very important questions are, will we provide equal or better service to our residents? And will we... Excuse me, Regina, please.
Equal or better.
It's a long number. Been a long night, please.
You don't get our five minutes.
What about the impact on our city employees? And... And this is very important to us. We need to understand that, we need to come up with a resolution that everyone in the city can agree on. That's very important to us. The way this bid process works, and this is not our guidelines, this is the way it works. When we go out for bid, we can't even open these until a certain time period has elapsed. And it just happens that August 17th is the date we're allowed to open them. My promise to all of you here is that in September, we will present all of this information to you again and no decision will be made until we talk about it again. We'll present to you what we found out and we'll talk about it and revisit this information. By then, we'll have answers to your questions. We can't answer them right now. We don't know if we could save any money. We don't know if it's going to be equal or better service. And we don't know what the impact will be on our employees. So let us gather that information. That's all we're doing. This is an information gathering session. That's all that's taking place at this time. I want to make it very, very, very clear. We value all of our city employees and we appreciate the input of our city residents that came out here and took your time tonight and gave us the opportunity to hear your concerns and for you to hear our response to those concerns. Believe me, we heard you. We heard your voices and we will give that the utmost consideration. I promise you that. Any other questions, please feel free to contact us, any of the council members, the city manager, the CFO, and we will continue to have this dialogue until we come to a reasonable resolution. I look forward to seeing you come to other council meetings. Please, let's get to September, let's see what the data is, let's talk about it again and let's listen to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's not much more to be said that hasn't been said tonight, but I'll try anyway. As Mr. Salkin said earlier, this issue had been looked into 24 years ago. And I did a little research and found the minutes to the February 3rd and 18th city council meetings in 1992. And some of the same people who spoke against prioritization are here, were here tonight. Reverend Gregory Jackson, Reverend Tony Jackson, I didn't see Mr. Williams, but he was here. Reverend Carolyn Davis, Deacon Robinson, Reverend Curry, Jesse Ellison. And there were others who are no longer with us that were here. Reverend Purrie, Grover Reynolds, Geneva Youngblood, Lois Braithwaite, Conrad Francis, all African Americans. I'm sure maybe some of you were here that night, those nights too, when the issue was broached then. What I saw tonight was that it just wasn't all African Americans who spoke in defense of DPW. It was a broad spectrum from this city and that speaks volumes. There was a Reverend Mark Beckwith from Summit Avenue at one of those meetings who said, "You're talking about costs, but there are human costs. You should not expect to satisfy the bottom line on the backs of those who bear it." I agree. Which brings me to this point of, on the list of things to do as being a member of the council, in retrospect, the issue of privatization, in my opinion, should have been discussed before there was any discussion and vote about bonding for the sports facility or anything else.
Thank you.
I don't have to repeat the issues at hand, you all did that. But what I need to say is, is that this council person is not in favor of privatization because no matter what the numbers look like, there are human costs at stake and I am not willing to sacrifice even one person. Let's come up with a fair contract and let's get the trucks that these guys need to do their jobs properly. From your presence tonight and the comments given, I'm sure you'll be here to make sure that history repeats itself from 1992. No privatization in 1992, no privatization in 2016.
I know it may seem like I'm being disingenuous by not always looking out, but I do write everything down. I have a lot to say. And I could quote every person, but I take seriously what people say and I write their notes down so I can save them and read through them, all right? Because it's important to me, all right? It's important to me. Everything I write on here has a name to it of somebody who spoke about it, all right? And I highlight parts that I speak about, my part. The auditorium situation. The reason, I got a text message from Mr. Nunnamacher, not a text message, an email, I think about 10:30 yesterday. I did not see it till early this morning when I got up. Didn't see it, all right? He did say, give it to the, but I did call him as soon as I saw it, early this morning. He then emailed back about putting it on Facebook. You know what? It was a decision, he knew there was going to be a lot of people too. I wish they had offered it earlier because now we're stuck between that rock and hard place. All right, we changed the venue and everybody comes here and doesn't know to go to the high school. What do we do? What do we do? All right? You have people dropped off, all right? Please, give me my five minutes, folks, all right? I did not interrupt you guys. The, I did not want people getting dropped off here, all right? And then being stranded here and finding a sign that says, "The meeting's now at the high school," all right? What's it going to happen? Next time, absolutely, there's plenty of time, all right? But to call midday the day before, that's, to me, was not the right time. There were some great questions and to be quite honest with you, this is what it's all about. You guys raising the questions in front of us so that we can hear you, all right? We're here to listen and we heard plenty tonight, believe me. We heard, you know, I could go through this whole list of things we heard tonight and some of them were very important. Background checks. Are these companies going to have background checks for these employees? This is something the council, that's not our business, we don't know. We need to ask that question. One of the things we need to ask. I want to thank the other DPW workers from the other towns that came here in support. But one in particular, I'm looking for his name. What is his name? No, 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 no. He was from Englewood.
Sampson.
Was it Sampson?
First name was Sampson.
Who did, to me, I thought was, his time at the podium was definitely the most moving for me. He was the most straightforward. No, I have it, William from Englewood.
Yes, William Fillmore.
William Fillmore from Englewood, all right? And he went on to say how they've gone through it. So there's a man talking from experience, all right? He told us what happened in Englewood and how it didn't work. And these are the things we need to hear. These are the things that will help us to make our decisions. To not get the information, whether, you know, you're going to hear all different concepts on the bid, why bid, without the information, we're ignorant because we don't have information to make a decision. We need to have the information to make the decision. We're in charge of an entire city. To not do that, we would not be doing our due diligence. But that said, voices were heard tonight. We respect everybody who came out here and spoke. This is the way government should work. There was a, somebody said, "No transparency." And when did we start talking about this? There was no serious discussion really until recently and it was asked at the podium. Now, you know, they compared, they saved, excuse me, they compared the Save the Eight to this, all right? That's the eight EMT workers that were let go by the city government back in 2009. You can't compare this. Those guys woke up one day without any notice by anybody and had no jobs. The fire chief at that time who was in charge of them had no idea. They came in and said, "You just lost eight guys." That's it. When months earlier, they were told it would be political suicide for them to do that, all right? Point being, I was asked at the podium, from the podium, "Are you thinking of privatizing sanitation?" I said, "We're looking at the numbers. We're looking at the numbers." So... Said, "We're looking at the numbers." And from there, we're here, all right? And we are looking at the numbers. We have no numbers, we have no information, we have absolutely nothing except what we heard tonight, okay? There was somebody said, "We're at the number of 800 and whatever thousand dollars it was." And I'll have to defer to Mr. Mangan on how he came up with that number. I think it was just, you know, broad-based numbers based on the possibilities, but, you know, that's not an exact number. That was an approximate number. We are going to meet again, like the deputy mayor said, those numbers will come in a sealed envelope. We don't get to see them. I'd be happy for you to look at them at the same time we do, all right? I'm totally comfortable with that. Totally transparent. And this decision will be made being that way. But believe me, what you folks have said here tonight has a very, very, very large impact on our decision. I'm going to allow him. Let me just finish then I'll allow him to give the answers. I don't even know exactly how I came up with it myself. This plan that was presented tonight, did you see it before tonight? Did you see it before tonight? We didn't see this before tonight, folks. Never saw it.
That's due diligence.
Never saw it. Mr. Galbert, if you can't...
That was me, John, don't yell.
No, it was Mr. Galbert too. I know his voice, please.
I'm sure you do, John.
All right.
And you're going to hear it for 11 months or so that you've got less than up there.
Officer...
Lying through your teeth with the witch next to you about everything.
That is totally unacceptable.
I'm going.
Good, go.
Because I can't listen to bogus nonsense lies that come through both of your teeth. Both of your teeth. And you still don't have a sarge.
All right. I'm going, you know what?
You haven't changed your...
Please remove him from the chamber.
Sign of complaint.
Please remove him from the chamber.
You liar. You and the witch next to you, get it?
That is just horrible, but you know what?
I think we shouldn't think about prioritizing, just break away.
Like I said, we're listening to everything you folks said tonight, all right? Again, let's, on another note, this is important stuff for the community, obviously, but let's take, when we go home tonight, let's definitely say a prayer for the people down in Orlando, Florida, who are really suffering another terrorist attack in this country. Excuse me, Ms. Galbert, please. Yeah, you're talking while I'm talking.
John, finish about everything that everybody asked tonight. We want to go home too. You can end with Orlando.
Miss, I'm trying to end. I'm ending with what we're talking about right now, please. A little respect.
You're ending?
Yeah, I'm going to end.
Are you going to speak about the police?
Do you want me to speak about the police?
Yeah, I do. People spoke about it here tonight. Your city manager is in arbitration. Were you aware? Were you aware of that? Without meeting with the authorities?
Mrs. Galbert, no yelling. Officer, officer, please.
Where's the care?
Dispute it here. That's enough. Motion to close. Motion to close, second. All in favor? Aye.
I guess he called the cops how he feels about that. Or the city manager didn't tell him the whole truth.
Did you know that you're in arbitration? Did you know that you're in arbitration? No, you won't answer.
Wouldn't answer you.
You better go.
Hey, officer, please. And you're threatening, and you're threatening and then you will be arrested. Threatening language.